Good evening. This September is the 19th, 2023 Board of All of Us Meetings hereby called to Order. As a reminder, this meeting will be livestreamed and recorded on the city's YouTube channel. I ask this time Alderman Hamilton if you will lead our prayer, that will be followed by me leading in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Please pray with me. Dear Father in heaven, we thank you for your many blessings to us, dear Lord. We thank you for blessing us with another beautiful day, and we especially, Lord, thank you for giving us this great city that is a great place for us to live and to work and to worship and to play and to raise our families, dear God. Lord, we ask you to bless this meeting tonight. We ask you, Father, especially, to guide our mayor as he leads this meeting. And dear Father, as we listen to the word spoken, we pray that each word will be to honor and glory to you and give us a peace about the decisions we make. This we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, free, open, and just as for all.
Madam Clerk, would you conduct roll call?
Aldridge.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Dickerson.
Here.
Earhart.
Here.
Hamilton.
Here.
Henderson.
Here.
Wallace.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Everyone present, 100%, so obviously a quorum is established. Board, you've had, through the weekend, you've had the minutes of our regular meeting on September the 5th, 2023. Any questions about the minutes from that meeting? And if no questions, any motions to approve the minutes as presented?
Motion to approve the minute.
Alderman at large, Collins, motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Hamilton. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Following the agenda, mayor's update for the board is relatively short. This time, we had a lot of updates the last occasion, but you do have, have a handout in front of you. From a human resources standpoint, open enrollment for our group insurance, group health, dental and optical has been completed. Great work by the HR department completing those, so all employees have re-entered or made their selections. Our E-911 dispatchers, Angie Carroll and Jody Grimes, have completed all the requirements and they've obtained their Mississippi BETST, state certifications, to serve as a dispatcher in this state. From a Parks and Recreation standpoint, Buckin' and the Branch Rodeo was held last Saturday evening. It was a success. Approximately 1,500 attendees were present. From an administration standpoint, I'm pleased to say that thanks to some of the help on the board, Alderman Wallace and others, and other members throughout the state that I have been appointed to serve on the Mississippi Municipal League Board of Directors, so look forward to doing that and hopefully some work, some things that will help all the cities throughout the state. And also, we have closed on our animal shelter land to build our new animal shelter. That land is in our possession now. It's at Legacy Park. It is on Polk Lane, south of Highway 302, and we are now entering the design phase to get design work done for the new animal shelter. You have some stats in front of you, fire incident types from the fire department, calls that they made over the last month, and also you have EMS calls, rescue calls, hazardous service calls, just to show you the type things going on from the fire department side. And also, you have before you, on the last page of the handout, different items that were held from the fire department dealing with our community, fire safety education, training, et cetera, tornado siren project that's taking place, career day at schools, just to show the involvement from fire services, so hats off to them for their, their roles there. Any questions on the mayor updates? Hearing none. Following the agenda, the consent agenda you have before you. Any questions on those items, items 1 through 25? Any questions on items 1 through 25 on the consent agenda? If no questions, any motions to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Earhart, motion to approve, second by Mr. Wallace. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries to present as is. Next item on the agenda is Planning Commission. This is a public hearing date for an application to amend the project text and associated development plan for Mitchell's Corner Plan Development Area 1 to present, to permit gas pumps as accessory use to a loud convenience store submitted by Houston Engineering on behalf of 305 College Incorporated, property owner. The 4.42 plus or minus acre subject property, which is Zon C4 Planned Commercial District, is located on the southwest corner of the intersection of College Road and Highway 305. Public hearing was set for this date on August the 15th, and for, we'll put the process flow up on the screen, process flow, the bullet items I sent this afternoon, so, so that everybody will know how this flows and how this rolls out. Thank you for your attendance tonight. I know we've got people on both sides that want to give information to the board before they make their decision. Just to show you how this works, so to make sure there's an understanding, the staff report made by the city staff will be made to the Board of Alderman at first. The Board of Alderman will then ask the staff any questions they have about the report. The second part of the process, the applicant or the applicant's representative, i.e. an engineer or an attorney, will provide additional details, if there are any additional details to be shared. The Board of Alderman will then ask the applicant questions as they need to about the application. From there, we'll go to public comments. Are allowed for up to three minutes maximum. Questions are not allowed. Comments are allowed. Professional decorum must be maintained. We'll have a device over to my right at the clerk's desk that will give a, a warning at a, a notification at a green light, a warning at a yellow light, and a stop at a red light, which means your three minutes are up and it's time for the next person to provide their comments after that. Once public comments are completed, for the application and against the application, then the applicant's allowed to respond to any issues raised by public comments. After that, the board will ask questions of the applicant and the applicant's representative or staff, if they have any questions, and at the final part, the board will decide whether to make a motion on the application or to let it die without a vote. Is the board ready for the staff report?
Procedure will...
Please, uh-huh.
On your screen and on the diagram, excuse me, on the screen for the board of members and on the large screens for the audience, you see a map of the subject property. A petition was submitted in opposition to this project by certain property owners in the vicinity of the subject property. The portions of the property that were, are owned by the petitioners are highlighted in blue on the map that's shown on the screen. State law says that a petition submitted by the owners of 20% of the property adjacent to any one side and within 160 feet of that side of the subject property force what the law calls a supermajority, which means that a motion to pass the application would require the votes of five board members rather than four, which would constitute a simple majority. Staff has reviewed the ownership records for the owners or the signatories to the petition, and it appears to staff, and it's my recommendation, that the board accept the petition as sufficient to force a supermajority voting standard to be in effect for tonight. Mayor, if the board agrees, that requires motion second and vote to recognize the petition as sufficient to force a supermajority. I will note that just alone, the south area, the south property line alone, based on the way the law works with a multi-sided piece of property, clearly, the two owners that signed in those two addresses, they own 100% of the property within 160 feet of any one side of the subject property. Therefore, those two property owners alone would be sufficient to have the supermajority voting standard in effect. So it's my recommendation that the board have a motion second and vote to recommend the supermajority is applicable to tonight's proceeding.
Thank you, Mr. Di. Board, is there a motion to grant this supermajority?
Motion.
Mr. Wallace, motion to grant supermajority. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Collins. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. So under this scenario, the motion to approve the application would require five of seven favorable votes, five of seven favorable votes. The motion to deny the application would be a simple majority, four out of seven noes.
That's correct.
And I anticipate a roll call vote with this particular item, so we'll know the, the total count. Any questions from the board on the supermajority? Ready for the staff report, please?
Mayor Alderman, before you is a request to consider a project text amendment for Mitchell's Corner Area 1A. The main reason being to permit gas pumps as accessory use on this piece of property. The use of the term accessory is intentional in the sense that the property already permits convenience stores. So the building itself, with the articles for sale inside that store constitute the principal use. The gas pumps are essentially accessory to that principal use which is already permitted on site. This application has gone through a number of hearings, and in this presentation, I will essentially touch on four main points or four main areas. I'll provide a background context to this application, provide an analysis in light of the project text amendment criteria as stipulated in the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance has very specific criteria for determining whether a project text amendment should be approved or not. So there are specific conditions provided in the zoning ordinance. I will also provide an impact comparison of the current and the proposed provisions. The current provision is being what the project text as was approved by the county provides, and what the current applicant is proposing. So I will compare the two, basically, and the impact from those two relative to this specific application. Finally, I will provide the recommendation of the Planning Commission following the meeting on August 8. Next slide, please. Before you is the location of the subject property. It is located at the intersection of, as you see there in red, it's located at the intersection of College Road running east-westward and Highway 305 running north-southward. It is not exactly at that intersection. It's a bit, it's a piece of property, that triangular piece of property in between, which has a gas station. The property is located here in red. This area marked, this line in yellow, that is the current city limits. So the property is inside the city limit, but they are joining road. So Highway 305 are joining this property is actually outside of the city limits. In terms of background context, the county approved the project text and the preliminary development plan for this particular piece of property back in 2005. Per the approver and the language in the project text, the county specified that this site would be permitted to be subdivided into two lots, basically as shown on this project text. The county also required that there would be a 30-feet-wide landscape, natural landscape buffer on the east and the west and the south side of the property, and there would be a 20-feet-wide buffer with trees on the north and on the west side of the property adjoining the highway. The county also included, as approved in this preliminary development plan, which creates certain entitlements on the property. The county also included two driveways, permitted that there would be two driveways on this particular site, one for each lot. Those are essentially what the plan layout called for. Across the street is a site that has been developed for Dollar General. As you would see, that piece of property is, has basically been divided into two lots, following the layout that you have in Area 2. So Dollar General is currently on one lot. It's very possible that in future, the rest of that property is going to be developed again for more intensive commercial purposes, as you see, shown on this slide, following what the county approved. If you stay with it, those are the entitlements of this particular piece of property. This rezoning, this happened, as I did mention, in 2005, when the property, when the county rezoned the property from agricultural residential AR to C4 plant commercial. So this planned commercial zoning is the current zoning of that piece of property. In 2021, the city annexed this property with this C4 zoning district. We inherited that zone, we inherited the project text, and the project text, the preliminary development plan, they all remain enforceable, they are all applicable until such time that the Board of Alderman decides to amend it, as you may do tonight if you choose to do so. A number of uses were included in the project text that was submitted to the county and was approved. If you go on the city's website today, there is a, in your pocket, it's a matter of ethics, I had to include that in your pocket. The applicant made a submission in terms of what transpired when he was acquiring this piece of property, and did mention, to kind of take a long story short, if you go on the city's website, this is the list, and you click on the property, just as anyone would follow to know what the particular zoning of the piece of property is, and the list of uses that are permitted on that particular piece. On the city's website, this is what you will find there. So this is the Siroh County, this is the zoning map of the city. If you click on it, it will come up to this page, which shows you the different uses that are permitted on that piece of property. This was uploaded by the county, not by the city. All of this was done by the county before they transferred the property over to us, and it remains there on the city's website. Number eight, on it states that the following uses shall be permitted, convenience store with or without gas pumps. So that basically means the site permits gas pumps. The applicant, when he subsequently called me, I wanted to submit site plans. I went in and I reviewed, I did a just preliminary review, went on the city's website, I looked at this list, and from experience, purely from experience, if I were an entry-level planner, I would not have known. There is no way I would have known. Just from experience, something was off. The wearing, I didn't find the BAWK regulations that normally would go with a C4 property. So I started reading down through the minutes to see whether this was actually even Zon C4 or not, and it was in the course of reading, in the minutes of the Board of Supervisors meeting, that I found that the Board of Supervisors in approving the project text had eliminated or prohibited gas pumps. So that is hidden in the minutes, and it will be understandable that an entry-level planner will not, will not, we just don't find uses by going into minutes of media. They are usually disclosed in the zoning code itself. In October 2022, after the city had annexed this piece of property, the applicant submitted an application, following that discussion I had with him, saying, no, this property does not permit gas pumps, based on the Board of Supervisors' decision. If you want to have gas pumps there, you have to amend the project text and go through this process. So the applicant submitted a project text amendment request back in 2022. That went before the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission recommended denier based on two reasons. One, that the future land use map at the time designated the property as suburban residential. And secondly, the Planning Commission raised safety concerns based on the traffic study that was submitted to the Planning Commission. That traffic study did not evidently consider growth. It did not do site distance measurements because of the change in grades that you have out there. It did not consider that, and it did not consider any lane additions on Highway 305 within the frontage of the property. If you look at Dollar General across the street, for example, it has got a deceleration lane entering into the site. So the project text as submitted in that particular application was really, the traffic study was not done to the standard that one would expect. That is the reason the Planning Commission denied the application. The applicant decided to move forward with it, but it was brought before you, but before you, you, you actually, the Board of Alderman actually did schedule a public hearing, but before the date of the public hearing, the applicant withdrew the application. So that is the reason you didn't get to make any decision on this in 2022. In November, on November 4th of that year, the applicant submitted, having withdrawn the application, he, he, he went ahead and submitted a new application. First, it was a concept, and, and I will touch on that concept in the course down the line, but to just mention briefly, when he withdrew the application, he called me, he asked what were the uses that are permitted on the site. He wanted to be clear about that. I did tell him, there was a for-sale sign on that piece of property. That sign, he really didn't intend to sell an entire piece of property. Based on the setup that the county had, where you could subdivide it into two lots, he wanted to sell one of the lots and then develop the other lot himself. So you, we would have ended up, if that had gone through, we would have ended up with two commercial businesses on that particular piece of property. He had an offer on it. That is more of a private thing at, at his level. When that concept was brought in and I looked, suggested to me, and I looked at the impact of what it would create, I re-engaged the developer on the possibility of something that would have less impact compared to what he was proposing, which he was permitted to do by right, following the project text approved by the county. But the traffic impact alone would have tripled, would have tripled. The application before you is not a request to change the zoning of this property from the current C4 to any other zoning district. The property is remaining C4. The application is not also a request to permit a convenience store, because as I did mention, convenience stores are already permitted on this site as a use by right. So it's not to permit a convenience store. It is not strictly speaking to permit a convenience store with gas pumps, which is convenience store and gas pumps, so to speak, because anything dealing with convenience store and the impact that may create, it's already permitted on that property by right. If he came in today and wanted to develop a convenience store without gas pumps, there will be, this process will not take place. There will be no hearing at the Planning Commission, no hearing before the Board of Alderman. He would just simply submit a site plan. If he meets the specifications of the project text as approved by the county, staff would administratively approve it, and he will proceed with grading the site and constructing, and proceeding with construction. So this application is really not about a convenience store. It is, the request is only to allow gas pumps, it's just only about gas pumps, as an accessory use to the already permitted convenience store. As I did mention, the new application was submitted on November 4th. On November 15, the Board of Alderman adopted the regulations which require that gas stations be at signalized intersection. City's ordinance, that particular ordinance too, takes effect one month after adoption. In a, in this regard, that ordinance took effect on December 15, 2022. I remember at that particular meeting, I should say, the mayor did, the mayor did not know about this application. He had no idea. I knew that the application had come in. We usually don't receive applications and then proceed to go and brief the mayor immediately. That's not administrative procedure. We work on it, take it to the Planning Commission, and then send a report to him after that. So at that particular December, November 15 meeting, he had no idea that the application, an application had been submitted on November 4th. In this regard, this application predates the regulation that was adopted on December 15, and secondly, those regulations themselves specify that when it comes to planned developments, whether C4 or PUDs, the Board of Alderman has discretion on where it wants to permit them. So the, the Board of Alderman is, has the discretion to permit them even where the intersection is not signalized. In all other districts, it has to be signalized, but when it comes to planned development, because the project text comes before the Board of Alderman for review, the Board of Alderman in reviewing the project text makes the determination whether it wants to permit a, a gas station there or not. With respect to changes that the applicant made from the previous submission that was considered by the Planning Commission and recommended for denier, and the application that you have in front of you today, what are some of these changes? The initial application had a building size proposal of 6,720 square feet. The applicant reduced that by 720 square feet in this particular application. As you will see in the Planning Commission's recommendation, the Planning Commission further recommended that the building size be reduced to 4,500 square feet. So if these were approved with that condition, then it would be for 4,500 square foot building. What that does in terms of impact is that it reduces the intensity and any traffic impact that may occasion from the development. If a convenience store without gas pumps today were built on the property, there is no limit on how much square feet he can have. Insofar as he can provide parking, including the reduction parking allowance that were viewed into that, that, that code, or the project text as approved by the county, he can put in a 10,000 square foot building on that piece of property. There is no limit. The number of gas pump base, concept-wise, at the pre-development meeting, they initially had eight pumps. At the pre, at the Planning Commission, he reduced them to six pumps and the application to eight stations. So at the Planning Commission, those were reduced to six stations, and the application in front of you is four stations. So from the time of conception, concept, concept plan presented to staff in 2022 to today, the number of pump stations have reduced by half. In terms of both buffering, there is no requirement for a composite fence in the project text that was approved by the county. It's no requirement. If you were to approve this application to, the current application in front of you includes a 30-feet-wide evergreen buffer in addition to the natural trees area and a six-feet-high composite fence with brick columns every 50 feet. The Planning Commission actually recommended that that fence height be increased from six feet to eight feet. That increases protection for the surrounding and property values. The current project text doesn't have that. Highway 305 lane improvements. The text... The text as submitted in twenty twenty two had no right turn lane into the side. The current application provides for the turn lanes. So you have increased storage length of the right turn deceleration lane into the side. And there is also added a right turn acceleration lane out of the side. Uh, secondly, the applicant has been required by M dot to overlay the asphalt in the entire street frontage of that property. I will explain that when I'm talking about traffic issues. That impact, the impact of that will be an increase in traffic safety. Highway three oh five speed limit, previous application had no change in the speed limit. Looking under the current application, the applicant, when he readied the traffic study, he submitted it to M dot, M dot reviewed the traffic study back and forth for about the past six months. And M dot did, will be coming back to reduce the speed limit, required that the applicant reduce the speed limit. The, that would be the northbound speed limit from fifty miles per hour to forty five miles miles per hour. On that side, the two, the speed limit going north and south are not consistent. They are not consistent, and he can touch on that. In terms of building design, the previous application basically had a highway commercial gas station design, like what you see on Goodman Road, where you have a separate canopy with the lights all over it on the side and you have a separate building standing at the back. Basically, every, all the gas stations you've got in this city are like that. That is what the previous design had. The current design, as you would see, i- it's in terms of scale, in terms of architecture, in terms of signage, and the site functionality have all been redesigned to fit into the residential character of the neighborhood in an effort to de-emphasize the gas pumps areas. Those are design elements that are not currently required in the project text that we inherited from the county. They are not. So this is what I'm talking about. At the top, that is the design that you had in the very first submission in twenty twenty two. The current design totally takes away that highway gas station view with lights all over the canopy, set aside the building, looking like Dollar General across the street or even otherwise, because really in the project text from the county, there are no specific requirements that it has to be hundred percent brick, for example. Uh, the current design, it's more compatible as a seal on this side with the residential character of the neighborhood. So that is a change that the applicant has made. The previous application also did not consider population growth, which is one of the reasons the planning commission denied the application. The current application, following all the analysis, it considered population growth in De Soto County, in Marsha County, and in the city of Olive Branch, including, I did provide to them data on all the subdivisions that we have approved in that area, such as Highland Lake, Old River Farm. And then you also have Emory, things called Emory Lake in the county, uh on the east side of College Road. There's also the Orchard to the south of this particular side, got some more data from the county and provided to the applicant in the traffic study. All of that was used and the average growth rate stood at four point seven percent, historical growth rate. Plus the traffic, you know, the rate at which traffic has been changing on that road as measured by M dot for about the past twenty years. The average, average growth rate stood at four point seven percent. In this study, the applicant used a five percent growth rate. So he just went ahead and added a zero point three to the growth rate, accounted for that. That provides an accurate and reliable traffic study. The previous study also did not consider slopes, side distance, and turns into the side. That was not analyzed. The current application analyzed all of that, as I will explain down the line. The previous study did not include the realignment of College Road. The current application in front of you, the previous application did not include realignment of Ca- College Road. The current application in front of you includes the realignment of College, College Road within the city limits. The impact of that is that it incentivizes, incentivizes highway three oh five expansion. The distance separating the pumps and the tank, the gas pump and the tank to the nearest residential property line in the previous application was a hundred and seventeen feet. In the current application, it was, it is two hundred and twelve feet. The planning commission actually asked that it be increased to two hundred and fifteen feet for the gas tank. That increased the healthiness for surrounding residential properties. In terms of signage, the current project text does not limit the applicant to a monument sign. As I did show, this development, the current submission is being changed to an eight feet high monument sign to blend into the character of the neighborhood. In terms of, in terms of analysis, the first criteria in the zoning ordinance is that the application should be consistent with the minimum development standards in the C four zoning district. This application, our staff has reviewed it meets and exceeds those minimum, those minimum development standards from two main perspectives. First, there is a provision in the project text that this application will be required to meet every and any other provision or requirement of the city of Olive Branch Design Review Ordinance. So even if you don't have something spared out in the project text, the city's Design Review Ordinance will apply. In the project text for the county, there is no applicability of the city's Design Review Ordinance. And our city Design Review Ordinance is very demanding, far more restrictive. Secondly, the, the project text on the county is very lax in terms of issues of landscaping, buffering, lighting. Under the city's Design Review Ordinance, light from any property, commercial property cannot spill into an adjoining residential property. The applicant will have to submit a photometric plan which shows that light at property line, light intensity at the property line will be zero. So all those requirements stipulated in the city's Design Review Ordinance and the C four uh provisions in the city's zoning ordinance are met and exceeding. The second criteria is that the request should be made by the property owner. The application in front of you has been made by the property owner. So that criterion has been met. In terms of traffic safety, which I know is a big animal in the room, the first element that we considered, the city engineer in reviewing the project text, one of the reasons why we, the planning commission sent the applicant back to the joint board, was to look at the level of service. The key thing about roads is every road has a level of service. Basically, how it functions, to what extent can it function without being terribly, you know, failing in terms of congestion? That is really what level of service is. Engineers grade this from level A to level F. A, F is total fail. A is best and best. C is generally where you have most streets. Yeah, okay, most streets are at a level C. When you start getting to E, that is bad, whether it's poor, F is has totally failed. So the traffic study as it was conducted and then turned over to M dot, M dot reviewed it, validated it, the city engineer also reviewed it, validated it as being properly done, indicates that for eastbound traffic, for eastbound traffic at the intersection of highway three oh five and College Road, that functions at a level C. That is a standard for most streets, most commercial roads, that is, that's what it is. It currently functions at a level C. After construction, if this development was constructed, it will remain at a level C. It will not change for the eastbound traffic on College and three oh five, going towards green farms, docking farms. Now, going towards uh Emory Lake and to the right, if you're heading north, that will be to the right. The westbound traffic going towards docking farms, green farms, that is currently functioning at a level C. If this were, if this development was approved and constructed without any mitigating circumstances, without any improvements, that will skip, it will go from a C to a D. The applicant, if you look in the middle where it says westbound, before construction, that is currently a C. It would go from a C to what you have at the bottom, that would be a D. The applicant has proposed other improvements that would take it back from a D to a C, and I'm going to touch on that. The northbound traffic is currently functioning as CB, well, you have NB. That is a northbound traffic, is currently functioning at a level CB. Post-construction, it will remain CB, so no negative impact. Southbound traffic functioning at BC, post-construction, it will remain BC. So in terms of level of service, there is really no negative impact. What is this level C that we're really talking about? What is this, this level C? These are pictures taken on that side today with its timestamps, as you see on them. Six fifty seven AM in the morning. This is six fifty seven AM this morning. That is how that intersection functions. That is the traffic you get there. Six fifty eight at the bottom. This is seven AM in the morning. These at the bottom, that is, this is seven AM facing north, heading into City Hall. At the bottom, that is seven AM heading south towards the interstate. That is the traffic which you have. Within a minute after that, the picture to your right at the top, that is seven oh, seven oh one, that is the intersection, how it looks like. At the bottom, that is seven oh one facing south. To your right, that is seven oh eight, seven oh eight. This is seven oh eight heading to City Hall. So you are facing, you are heading north. The picture at the bottom, the picture at the bottom, that is facing east. Those are the number of cars you have. At the south, the very picture at the south, that is facing west. Eastward, that is still facing east, within a minute after that. Seven eleven, this is facing west. So this is going towards Dawkins Farms, Green Farms, that is a picture. Seven thirty, thirty minutes after that, traffic begins to increase because you're getting towards peak hour. Traffic begins to increase. This is seven thirty at that intersection, this is the number of cars that you have. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, one heading south. Seven thirty facing south on going towards the interstate. That is a picture at the bottom. That's how it looks like. This afternoon at four forty five, getting towards the peak hour in the afternoon, that is a picture to your right at the bottom. I counted the total number of cars that you had there, there were nineteen cars, uh right up to where you will have the driveway going into Old River Farm and Highland Lake. That is how it looks like. Once the peak hour passes in the middle between, from about eight o'clock to the peak hour again, four thirty, five o'clock and beyond. This is basically how that road looks like. This is eleven twenty five. This is eleven thirty. This is eleven forty in both, in all directions. So at eleven forty, this is heading north towards City Hall. There are cars, uh this is in the east direction, facing east. To your right, you have two cars. At the bottom, that is facing south, you have three cars. And heading westward, that is the picture to the left. Five minutes after that, eleven forty five, took this at five minutes interval. Eleven forty five, that's how the intersection looks like in all directions. At twelve o'clock, top of the hour, that's how the intersection looks like in all directions. The second element that in terms of traffic, which the applicant was required to, to, to include or to study, is a change in grade. What a change in grade does is it affects side distance. If a piece of property is at a low spot, like you have on that particular side, which is right here at the deep, this will be the location of the driveway right there in the middle. At that particular location, to the east, to the west, that is College Road three oh five intersection. And if you continue up the hill to your right, that is the top of the slope. And the applicant hired a surveyor, went out there, shot the great changes, made the great measurements. To be able to see safely in all directions from College Road towards the driveway, you need to have a minimum of five hundred and twenty feet for it to be safe. The current design is five hundred and eighty five feet. From the driveway, that is the same location where Dollar General is currently located. The driveway will basically be opposite, the Dollar General driveway will be at the same location. You need to have the same five hundred and twenty feet based on the changes in grade. These will provide, the current application, there will be one thousand two hundred feet. So it meets side distance measurement based on changes in grade. All of this was provided to M dot, reviewed by M dot, it met side grades, grades, side distance, changes, requirements on that state provisions. In terms of accidents, first, I did mention the addition of a turn lane into this side, which the applicant would be doing. When Dollar General was approved and went out and constructed at this particular side, the state required Dollar General to add a deceleration lane and also a middle turn lane. So these are pictures of the side today. What the middle turn lane does is it allows cars to pull into the middle turn lane, wait for other cars that are heading southward to clear, pass, and then they can make a left turn into the side. With the addition of this middle turn lane, I asked the, our police department before the planning commission meeting to determine whether there have been any accidents. The report I got from our police department was that they had been known. Adam and Dickinson did call my attention, which I want to thank you for that, sir. That was important because that road, as I did show on the very first slide, is actually outside of the city limits. So response on that road would be by the sheriff's office in the county. Planning commission meeting was on Tuesday, on the eighth. I went to the county's office on Friday, sheriff's office, and I asked for the report whether there had been any accidents at that intersection since these improvements were made from College to Mitchell's Way, which is the block where you have this particular piece of property. There had been known. There had been known. There had been one accident or incident that occurred at the Dollar General parking lot. What happened was the, a tow truck pulled in there to pick up a car and somebody backed out of the parking space and hit the side. I was provided with the accident report and I forwarded that report to the mayor. So they had been known. After I sent the staff report to you for this particular meeting, I wanted to make sure that between then and now, we've not had other incidences. So this afternoon at three o'clock, I was in the sheriff's office in the county. I was provided data by Captain Jonathan Poe. He indicated that there had been two accidents on three oh five, but not here. On September tenth, there was an incident at the intersection of Bethel Road and Highway three oh five, two miles from this location. On the fourteenth, there was also another incident to the south, not within the block where you have this particular piece of property. The applicant, as I did mention, proposes the realignment of College Road. College Road, as you have today, has this, let me use the word hunchback, and it creates a safety problem. Part of the city's effort to have that expansion of highway three oh five is the hope that this hunchback will be taken away, if this issue will be resolved. Because it kind of dips down, it goes down uh, into Highway three oh five and it's not really safe. So any steps that can be taken to eliminate this hunchback is a step in the right direction. When Mitchell's Corner, the residential section was approved back in the day, early two thousand or so. The county did require that the developer dedicate this particular area from here. Heading westward for the future extension of the road. But interestingly and strangely, when they approved the project text for this particular development back in two thousand and five. All they required in the development of this piece of property was that the applicant will improve to the center line of the road. So if you were to hold this applicant to that standard today, on any development that he proposes. He will basically build half of the road to the, to the middle of this area that will go nowhere. Neither connects to Church Road, to College Road, nor to Highway three oh five. It will simply be an improved piece of, of asphalt in the bush, so to speak. To resolve the issue of the increase in traffic, I did mention that for the eastbound, for the westbound traffic, you had an increase from level C to level D. That is because, that happened because customers coming into the side. Into this side would have had to get on College Road three oh five, so that they were heading westward. Though, if they were heading to the east. They will come to this intersection, go down on Highway three oh five and then enter into the side. What the applicant has done in this current proposal, and then, of course, when they are going back, you have to go back that same way, get back to that intersection and then make a left. What the applicant has essentially done in this application is eliminated that. If anyone was coming into this particular side from the west, so from Dawkins Farms, Green Farms. You will come in through the new College Road alignment, enter the side and then get out, go back into the subdivision without ever getting to that intersection. So that is what this design essentially does. It totally eliminates the need for any traffic, you know, that has to do with this side to get to that particular intersection. He could have achieved that simply by proposing it as a driveway, which is what he did in the first application. But the city engineer and I looked and we said, we need to build value for the city in this project, essentially. And we were able to push the applicant to build this as a full street. If this application were approved, that road as realigned will be constructed right up to the property line on Highway three oh five. The applicant has designed it showing, as you have at, on the, at the bottom here. Where it will extend across, submitted all these plans to M dot to make sure that the grade will work. M dot reviewed that, approved and issued a permit for it. So the road will have curb and gutter on both sides. It will have curb and gutter on both sides, it will be three lanes, so you have two through lanes and a middle turn lane. The current College Road really doesn't even have that. Uh, it would have a bike lanes on both sides. So this will be a full collector's street, really the way you want roads of this nature to be built. You will have five feet wide sidewalks on both sides, you will have a grass strip in between, curb, gutter, sidewalks, two bike lanes on both sides. And three lanes, two being through lanes and a middle turn lane. The next criteria requires the board to find that there are utilities within the vicinity of this side. Which will be suitable for commercial development as proposed. Surrounding this property, there are water lines, even Dollar General has the, the water line from the city, there are all city utilities in this area. You have seawash shown there in green, you have water line in blue, uh, you have gas lines shown there in. That orange color, so utilities are fully available, that particular criteria therefore is met. The application is also required to conform with the comprehensive plan, which is the reason the planning commission had denied it in twenty twenty-two. So the map to your left, that shows the comprehensive plan as it were in twenty twenty-two. If you see the property there is designated in yellow, so that is suburban residential. In December, when the Board of Admin updated the comprehensive plan. That was changed from suburban residential to commercial as shown in the image to your right. That was to respect the zoning of the property as it was inherited from the county, namely commercial. And there is a provision, the policy provision in our comprehensive plan recognizes that neighborhood commercial properties of this sort. Uh, have or can be permitted for convenience stores with gas pumps, that is stated in our comprehensive plan. In terms of impact on the surrounding, this will focus so much on some of the comments that were raised by the neighbors. That kind of forced us to do this extensive review, to make sure that we're covering everything. In terms of lights, I had mentioned that if this application were approved. There will be no lights spilling from this property into any adjoining property. Because of the design review ordinance requirements of the city. And it's also been included in the project text. Lights at property light, property lines will be zero luminos intensity. Secondly, all and to achieve that, that from the design of the building, we took away any of the lights on the canopy. If you look at the way it is designed, all the lights have to face down, it's basically like the roof of, roof of a house. So you don't have any lights by the side shining into the neighborhood. In terms of buffer, this is think Mitchell's Grove with the two houses looking into the side from the residential neighborhood, the picture at the top. It has those trees, that picture was taken today, it has those trees, those trees will remain in place. Those trees actually extend to about forty, I walked to that bush area and did a measurement from the fence, that is on the property line of all of the residential, uh, property. The trees extend to about forty-three feet. The county only required a natural buffer of thirty feet, which means the applicant could go in and cut down some of those trees. If he stuck to what was required by the county, he can actually reduce that buffer. If this application was approved, that buffer will stay in place. The, the picture at the bottom shows the side looking south on Highway three oh five. So all this dark area will basically, from here going into the residential neighborhood, will stay in place, it will not be touched. There is a ditch right here. The side design does not extend to that ditch, all of that is kept basically left as it is, as open space, that, that will not be affected. Uh, multiple times it has been said that it was a creek, it was a creek, I pulled the maps, the city maps, it didn't show that it was a creek, not even a blue, blue line creek. I went on that side, I took pictures of it, it's a wet weather conveyance channel. Basically, when the rain falls, then it carries water, there is not a creek permanently running through that area. Another element I did mention is the composite fence with brick columns. That will be added on all the sides and at the back of the property adjoining residential development. Planning commission did recommend that that be increased from six feet to eight feet. On that current provisions from the city, there is no requirement for a composite fence, eight feet high composite fence. In terms of fire, there was a concern that if gas pumps were allowed on this property, there will be fire. The only way we can resolve that is to look at whether gas pumps have been causing fire all over the city. I went to the fire chief and I asked him to pull his records for the past three years. And shows whether there have been fire incidences at gas station, whether any of those was caused by fuel pumps. He looked at the data, sent the data to me. Till today, no fire at the gas stations that we have in the city has resulted from fuel pumps for the past three years that, uh, he could pull the data from, they had been known. In terms of health, there is always this concern that if you permit a gas station or fuel pumps, so to speak, in a residential area. Uh, the BTX complex, it's a compound made up of benzene, toluene, ethyl benzene and xylene. Will cause cancer, will poison everybody around there, cause cancer and everybody will die. That is a common statement. However, there is a safe distance. If there was no safe distance from a gas station, then with all the gas stations we have in the city, everybody would have cancer. The only way we don't have that is because there is a safe distance from gas stations. In areas where you have, where it's flat and you have high winds. That places like California has been measured to be about four hundred feet. In the south areas like us, we looked at a number of, there, there is a way to determine it. Often, if there is a safe distance provided in the city zoning ordinance, then we will enforce that. In our case, there is no distance requirement in our zoning ordinance. For that reason, I couldn't, we couldn't just choose an arbitrary number and enforce. The next approach to resolve that is to look at what the city has historically approved in terms of safe distance. To be fair, we have to look at the logic of appropriateness, what has the city historically approved? We look at the gas stations that are joined residential neighborhoods in the city, or that are next to residential properties. The closest is eighty-one feet, the furthest is a hundred and eighty feet, for an average of one hundred and twenty-six feet. The applicant in the current design proposes two hundred and twelve feet. So he exceeds that separation distance for any other gas station adjoining a residential development that has been proposed or that has been approved in the city. In terms of property values, this is statistical calculation. We did a calculation to determine whether prop, gas stations adjoining residential developments in the city have had any effect on property values. The only way you, you know that is, properties that are closer to a gas station will have a lower value than those that are further from it, everything being constant. We found no significant impact, even when we used a number of variables, lot size, things like other improvements like swimming pool or no swimming pools. Factored all those variables, we found no significant impact. In terms of crime, the FBI publishes a report on various land uses and their crime, the crime rates that they generate across the country. Per that report, convenience store without gas pumps is at number four, generator of crime. Convenience store with gas pumps, that will, gas station is at number seven. In other words, convenience store with gas pumps actually generate less crime compared to when you don't have gas pumps. And theoretically, there are two reasons for that, it's lights and two is activity outside of the building. Just as in single family residential neighborhood, when you have people sitting outside in neighborhood, there are eyes on the street, you have less crime. When you have no eyes on the street, the tendency for crimes to be high, to, to, to go up is higher, it's basically the same logic that applies here. The mayor wanted me to look specifically at Olive Branch, which is the right thing to do. Because some of these numbers take very urban areas, you know, and don't consider your local reality. So I had to look at our local reality and I asked our police department to look at the numbers for the past five years, twenty twen, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three. Reported incidences, I have all the statistics here, all the reports that they sent to me, I have all of them here. Convenience store with gas pumps in the city, report an average of one point two nine incidences per year per store. Convenience store without gas pumps, you can hardly find any these days, there were only two that came close to being a convenience store without gas pumps. One out here on, actually, you'll find them kind of like within strip malls, out here on Goodman Road, on old Goodman Road, there is one out there. The number of incidents was one point four zero incidences per year per store, which is higher. We looked at retail, the mayor also asked that I look at retail, because retail is currently permitted on this property as a use by right. Averagely in the city, excluding the outliers like Walmart. You have three point zero five incidences per year, if you add Walmart, it goes to about seventeen incidences per year, that's an outlier, I kept Walmart out. So the lowest among all of them in terms of crime, following our local reality is actually a convenience store with gas pumps. The next section of our presentation looks at what is currently required or the current provisions from the county and what the applicant, the applicant proposes. In other words, if this application were denied, what will you have out there? If it were approved, what will you have? And if the applicant, if you were denied and the applicant decided to go with the formula which he had, which was subdividing the property. As it was permitted by the county and entitled in the project text as the development regulations of that particular piece of property. If he went with that, the aggregate traffic at that particular intersection will be six thousand two hundred and nine. Average daily traffic aggregate for those two uses. If it went with the current application, it will be two thousand four hundred and forty-three average daily traffic. So the choice before the city is really whether in, at an intersection that we are concerned about traffic. We want to allow it for potential development in a way that the traffic volume will be almost three times what the applicant is currently proposing. Or approve what he is proposing, which will generate less traffic volume. In terms of the number of driveways, left turns, that's usually where you have collisions. Because as people come out of driveway and they make any, a left turn, as in this case. If you look at the, the diagram you have at the bottom, the county, per that project text, and it's even written in the project text that the side will be permitted to have two driveways. I looked at M dot manual, M dot manual in this particular case, based on the number of the traffic volume. And the amount of street frontage that this side has will qualify for two driveways. Under this plan, you have two driveways, so you have two left turns. If you, if we go with the current application, if the board were to approve the current application, you have one driveway. So you eliminate its, a, a traffic left turn safety risk, basically drops, you have that risk. If the application were denied, there is no requirement for the cor, College Road realignment. If you were approved, there would be a College Road realignment. In terms of crime, I already indicated, uh, spoke on this. In terms of buffer, the current application is a thirty feet wide natural buffer with fifty feet building setback. If these were approved following the recommendation from the planning commission, you have a thirty feet wide. I put a plus there because the Board of Admin has the discretion whether you want to require an increase in that buffer width, you have that discretion, that's why I put a plus there. And the building will be set back sixty feet. The buffer will also be fortified with evergreens. What that does is during winter, when the natural trees you have out there shed their leaves, the evergreen will provide continuous, uh, buffering. You also have an eight feet high composite fence with the brick columns. If these were denied and you had the two buildings, the two lots subdivided, developed as the applicant had proposed at one point. Basically, you will have a dumpster, bas, adjoining within thirty feet of a single family residential home. Under the current dispensation, under the current application in front of you, the closest you can have a dumpster will be two hundred feet. The current list of uses in the project text allows for vape shops, tobacco sales, those are all retail elements. And tobacco shops units are in plan, and they call them LULU's, locally on desired land uses, they reduce property values, they are like landfill. Under the current application, those have been prohibited in the project text. So you will not have a vape shop there, you will not have any kind of tobacco sale on that piece of property if these were approved. In terms of signage, the current text allows for higher signs, various designs. If these were approved, the design of the sign that you will have will be an eight feet high monument sign as shown on the right of your screen. So that's the difference of what you will have at that intersection, of course, the pictures to the left, that is just proto- Of course, the pictures to the left, that is just prototype. It's, it's, it's not exactly what you're going to have there. That's just for example's sake. In terms of building design, when you follow architecturally what is allowed in the code, the applicant could create this blighted situation on your left of your screen. If this were approved, what you will have will be this design. When the project text is approved with the development plans, one of the things we did in this application is we did not allow the applicant to just pick up pictures from the internet and include in the preliminary development plan, as you sometimes have in some project texts. We forced the applicant to actually design it, get down to the details, do the engineering work, such that when the board, if the board were to approve this, the board knows what it will actually look like. The planning commission at its meeting on August eighth, unanimously, by a vote of six to zero, unanimously recommended approval of the application to amend the project text for Mitchell's Corner Plan Development Area One, essentially to permit gas pumps as accessory use to the already-allowed convenience store and to adopt the associated three oh five and college neighborhood convenience market project text and development plan so that it becomes binding and as such enforceable, subject to these conditions one to six. That the building setback be increased from fifty feet to sixty feet from any residential property line. All building facades facing College Road and Highway three oh five be reserved every forty feet in conformity to the general character of houses in the area. This is not a current requirement in the project text from the county. That the buffer fence height be increased from six feet to eight feet. That a convenience store building size be reduced from six thousand, not six hundred, sorry for that, there is a zero missing, from six thousand square feet to four thousand five hundred square feet. I did approach the planning commissioner, we made that motion, and I asked him why he asked for that reduction in the building size. And he said it was because he didn't want them to have a separate unit where they could sell vape. So really vape is already outlawed as a use in the project text. So it really has no, even if you left it at six thousand square feet, it would have no effect because vape is already outlawed. No digital signage for gas prices and the vent pipes must be at least two hundred and fifteen feet from the nearest residential property line. So the planning commission did listen to, opened a public hearing, took notice of everything that was said. They did not just rob and stamp this. They impose all these additional conditions on the application and recommended it to you for approval. Upon a number of findings, which I don't think is necessary for me to go into them. The first being that the application is consistent with the minimum development standards in the C four. It's been recommended, it's been requested by the property owner. It aligns with the co, with the comprehensive plan. The convenience store is already permitted on the property. Another potential uses such as restaurants and general retail are actually more intensive in terms of impact than what this applicant is proposing. The traffic study has been reviewed by the city engineer and found to meet appropriate standards. Uh, M dot has reviewed the traffic study, approved it, issued a permit for it already. The, there will be no negative impact in terms of level of service. All of that has been validated. The, the developer will bear full responsibility in the construction of the new college road realignment, which is estimated to about one point two mil. If you were to build that road, by the time it ends, it will be more than that. Just the amount of grading on that side. That would otherwise not be constructed. And this road will be of benefit to the general public and will incentivize and foster the eventual expansion of Highway three oh five. That is a priority to the city. Additional buffers, including a composite fence, would be provided. Uh, the distance from the gas pumps increased. The side layout and building design blends and renders the proposed development compatible with the neighborhood. The data on crime, fire incidents, property values show that there will be no negative impact with respect to these elements. The approval of the proposed development will subject this property to greater and better design and development requirements regarding building architecture, street improvements, improvements on traffic circulation, the freestanding signs, the development intensity reduction, buffer contents, lighting restrictions, which will enhance the quality of the neighborhood and will not otherwise be provided. These are the reasons for which the planning commission recommended approval. Thank you, that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Song. Does the board have any questions regarding the staff report?
Yes, Mayor, I had two quick questions for clarification. Mr. Song, I believe you said the planning commission recommended forty-five hundred square feet rather than six. Is that correct?
Rather than six thousand, yes, sir.
Okay. At number two, we're dealing with an eight-foot-high composite fence, not six foot. Is that also correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
The applicant had proposed six foot in the project text. The planning commission recommended that it be increased from six to eight.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome, sir.
Mr. Wallace?
Two or three questions. If it, if it remains the way it is, say, say it's not approved. What happens with the commercial lots? Do they stay two commercial lots or does it stay one?
It will stay two commercial lots.
And open to whatever business is inside the C four highway commercial?
Will be viewed on both lots. So you can have a retail on one lot and you can have a restaurant on the other lot.
All right, what about, uh, what did the supervisors' minutes say the reason they denied pumps? Does the minutes say why?
I'm sorry, sir, I didn't.
Why did the supervisors omit pumps when they approved it? Does it say?
I went through the minutes, it really didn't say why. I went through the minutes, it really didn't, there was, the minutes read something like, would you, let me pull, let me pull out the minutes. I don't have the full.
Well, he looks it up, I got a question.
I don't have it with me. But I think at that time, Steve Bigelow did, did explain this. At that time, one of the things was, back then, it would seem, there was no stop light at the intersection of College and three oh five, back then.
Yeah, but there's the gas stations, but I, I don't know why they would omit it over a stop light. Man, it's about as loud as it gets. Sorry.
So they, 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 they just had a discussion back and forth and they asked the applicant whether he would be okay with removing gas pumps as a, a permitted use at a time. And the applicant said, yes. There, there was really no, in the, in the, in the.
The minutes didn't say.
The minutes, don't, don't go into the reason.
Okay. I got another question for Andy. Andy, when, when, we did the traffic diet study over, you know what it's called, a traffic diet?
Yes, sir.
Over near Walmart and, and Chick-fil-A.
Right.
Do those studies also show differences in traffic like this is attempting to do?
Did they show?
Do, can they show differences in traffic as this, as this is attempting to do?
If.
Let's say we use that group to do a traffic study near the intersection of College and three oh five.
Yeah.
What in your opinion would be a difference in, in the way they would approach it? Since I think they called it a traffic diet. But what would, do you know if they would approach it differently?
You, when you, when you do a traffic study, um, you're, you're going to be looking for certain aspects to be, to be analyzed. And you kind of lay out a scope when they're doing that study to see what the impacts would be. So you usually have the current conditions and then you put in whatever it is that you're trying to do for the future. So that was kind of done differently because that was, that was saying, okay, what's going to, what is it going to look like when we have full development? What's it going to look like when that four lane goes to three lane? And then you, you, you look at current and you look at proposed conditions and then you see what the impact would be. So in this case, it was, it was basically, let's see what the current conditions are at the intersection of College and three oh five. Let's put in this, uh, um, uh, C store with the gas pumps and let's see what kind of impact it has and you reanalyze it again. They had several different things that they, that we asked them to, to look at. One was the addition of the right turn decel lane coming into it. Make sure that we took into account the turn lane that's been added on Col, on three oh five. Um, the impacts, I guess, of the, um, um, a lane addition, I mean, of the new drive coming into College and how all that would work. So there, it's just different depending on what you're, what you're looking for on the proposed outcome and what's being developed.
Did we do an accident study on the opposite side of three, uh, College Road and three oh five? On the other side of the intersection?
Opposite side. Sure, where that, opposite side.
Did, did your accident study and looking at the incident reports pertain to the entire intersection or just the west side? Or that, or did it take in the entire intersection?
It took the entire intersection.
From north, south, east, west.
Yes. And both sides, the west side, the west side is in the ca, in the city and the east side is in the county. That's why I had to go to both police departments to get the data.
So the, the traffic study that they did starts out with them doing traffic counts?
Hmm.
Um, and that was, the report was turned in, um, April of twenty-three, so not too long ago. I think that if you're, I don't know whether you're asking if the Dollar General was incorporated into it and the effects of that, but it should have been at that time.
Dollar General was constructed in October last year. So in April, Dollar General was already open and functional.
One last question, maybe more for the mayor. When we changed the ordinance recently to allow gas stations at only particular intersections, was it two opposite, across-the-way intersection and not on the same side of the intersection?
It's really not necessarily on the same side. Uh, Alderman Wallace, the ordinance is, states that the convenience store gas station would have to be at a signalized intersection and no more than two total out of all four corners. But as Song mentioned, uh, the board passed that on December the fifteenth and this application was in process on November the fourth. Even when that meeting was held, we, I was not aware, we were not aware that it was in the process at the time. It was already in the pipeline, so to speak. But two out of four corners could have convenience stores or gas stations, uh, but it would have to be a signalized intersection.
And, and Mayor, and Song, correct me if I'm wrong, but that is for straight conventional zones. If you have a planned district like C four, uh, the Board of Alderman has the authority to have departures from that limit of two based on what the board approves in a project text.
Yes, sir.
Or to approve a gas station at a non-signalized, uh, location if that's part of a planned district, C four, PUD, or something of that nature.
Yes, sir.
My, my only question, art, this was approved in the county in two thousand and five. Is that when they rezoned it?
That, that's when the rezoning from agricultural residential to C four.
Was the subdivision behind it already rezoned? Or was that added afterwards?
No, there's the, it was not subdivided yet. But in the preliminary development plan, it was set up to be subdivided, as I showed you with those two lots. And in the project text, the language in the project text specified that Area one and Area two, so Area one is where this property currently sits. Let me see if I can get to it.
I was wondering when the subdivision was developed and this was rezoned.
So the project text, the project text says, Area one, if you look at the, the picture you have at the bottom of your screen. So that's Area one. And Area two shall each be permitted to be subdivided into two lots. Accessibility to each lot is as shown in the attached plan. So that's why I think the county allowed Dollar General. The piece to the right where you have Dollar General has now been subdivided into two lots.
At the original zoning, the county had one public hearing for the residential and the commercial portion and rezoned, you know, many acres to residential, which now constitutes the residential subdivisions.
Okay.
And then rezoned, uh, the corner at C four at eight acres. So it was one hearing, one motion, one vote.
They did it all at the same time.
To rezone a large piece of property, part of it residential, part of it commercial.
So it's been commercial a long time subdivision.
The whole time that the property's been zoned for the subdivision, the corner's been zoned for commercial. Now, they may have been subdivided in later years and in phases, uh, but you would have had the original zoning, uh, taking place at the same time.
But, but, Mr. Di, back to Mr. Wallace's question, there's nothing in the county files to show why that they would allow gas pumps on the, uh, I guess there'd be the east side of three oh five at Cedar View, but not allow gas pumps on the right side or the west side going down three oh five. Nothing, nothing indicates.
Are you talking about further south?
Further south.
No, sir, nothing in the motion that was made by, uh, the supervisor nor in the, the vote. You know, there may have been other public comments about the pros and cons of gas stations. Um, I was not there for the original public hearing, but the motion by the Board of Supervisors did not give a rationale for excluding gas pumps on that corner.
Got you. Was that part of your question, Mr. Wallace?
Yeah. And again, it's been approved for commercial with these two buildings on there or we can, the whole thing is over the gas pumps. I, I doubt anybody would do it, but what about charging stations? I know, I don't know, don't have electric car or anything, but are they allowed?
In the, in the current application, that's an interesting question in the sense that the project text says only our, our laws for pumps. So for pumps are not the same as charging stations for electric cars. They are not the same thing. So if somebody were to go there and build and put charging stations, you, you could have, it would be allowed. I, I don't see, because they are not the same thing. You know, the, the project, what the county said was, and I can understand, at that time in two thousand and five, electric cars was not so much a thing being talked about. Um, the current application in front of you contemplates having provisions for that if in future that becomes something that is in demand. It's, it's been built into the design.
Okay, thank you.
Does the board have any additional questions regarding the staff report? Any questions on staff report?
Just one more. When, sorry, my voice don't carry very well unless I get right on. Um, a song went, so let's say it's not approved with gas pumps. So then they can turn around and put, it's already approved for like a tobacco store or so. Or what did you call it, a, a what shop?
Vape.
A vape shop.
Vape shops, tobacco shops, restaurants, retail, anything that you can retail out there, you can go retail on that property. The, the, the project text just says retail shops, saves and services. Anything you can retail out there, you can retail on those, on those, and restaurants. You can have restaurant out there, you can have, on, on two, on two separate properties. So you can have a restaurant on, if you look at your Area one, you can have a restaurant on, on two and your convenience store without gas pumps with tobacco and vape shops and all of that on lot one.
And we, we won't have a say so.
You, you wouldn't be able to stop it, no.
And that's based on zoning before it was brought into the city, right?
Yes, sir.
And one other thing, the traffic from Highway Commissioner, there's no movement on, it's still, he's saying ten to fifteen years. Is that still before they address the traffic?
We just don't have a definite timeframe. We're meeting with legislators tomorrow about three oh five again. But, uh, the board knows before I was here, y'all have been asking about help for Highway three oh five for a number of years. We don't have a definitive date of when it would be widened.
Maybe we can ask the Board of Directors during the meeting if they can.
Yes, sir.
Get in contact with certain.
The executive director of M dot and several key legislators will be up tomorrow for, to ride Highway three oh five and to ride Craft Road at seventy-eight, where it goes from five lanes down to a two-lane bridge. That's going to be a bus tour tomorrow with those decision makers. But there's no definitive date on when, uh, there's a commitment to make those improvements.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Questions?
Mayor, one point. Mr. Song, is it your request that your written report be made part of the record?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Regarding the staff report, does the applicant or the applicant's representative have any additional details to be shared for the board?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, my name is Billy Myers. I'm at Myers Law Group, PLLC, two sixty-five, uh, North Lamar, Oxford, Mississippi, three eight six five five. I'm here on behalf of the owner of this property, 305 College, Inc., whose principals are Yasser Sala and Sam Meek, uh, Deek, who lives in Olive Branch, Mississippi. In addition, uh, we have Byron Houston, who is the engineer for the project to give you more specific detail. I don't know how we could give you much more detail than the staff report that you got here, and I'm not, in my many years of law practice, seen a more glowing report, uh, for recommendation for approval from a planning commission than this one. Uh, my comments are just please focus on the fact that this application simply seeks the addition of gas pumps to a convenience store that is already legally permissible at this site. It was denied once before, as, as you know. What you see in this application is that the owner listened to the recommendations of the planning commission, the owner listened to the objections of the neighborhood and addressed those in this current application that's before you in order to justify the need for the gas pumps at this convenience store location. Introduce Byron Houston, Houston Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Myers.
Byron Houston, Houston Engineering, P O Box thirty-eighty-seven, Oxford, Mississippi, three eight six five five. And this is Shane King, um, and one of my assistant engineers. He's playing a video for the audience, and I don't know if you guys can see it, but it basically shows a rendering of kinda what the development would look like, and, uh, I'd like to reiterate that this is a, uh, project text revision just for fuel pumps. Um, by right, the owner can do several different types of, uh, developments, as a song has went over, and, uh, I would just like to add a few items or just kinda hammer at a few items that, um, um, the thing with the fuel pumps and everything, you're not, uh, creating additional traffic, you're, you're mostly picking the traffic off the road that's already there. Um, trip generation shows so many trips, but most of that, up to eighty-five, ninety percent of that is gonna be trips that are not really, um, originated just because of that store. And, um, one other item I didn't wanna talk about, he was talking about the level of service on, uh, the existing college, uh, road, and, uh, you know, when it goes to a D, it actually is really, really close to a D. I mean, just one or two more vehicles during peak hour and it, it would've been a D to start with, so it's borderline there anyway. And future improvements will really alleviate all of this area. Um, I know there's more development on the way in this area, and, um, my client has listened to the city, listened to the, um, the, uh, residents and has made, um, advised me to make whatever changes are necessary to make this agreeable, both with the community and with the, with the mayor and Board of Alderman. And, uh, we have, uh, he's gone overboard, we've put, you know, we've increased the buffers, we've, um, ensured that all the large trees and all the vegetation in that buffer zone would not be, um, taken out, all of that stuff will be supplemented with more small-type vegetation and some evergreen-type stuff that will just totally block out, you know, the view of that, um, development to the residents from behind. Um, also, the, um, the pumps, the closest pump is at least two hundred and fifteen feet, uh, from the west property line, which is the nearest residence. The vent location, um, my calculations is around three hundred feet, maybe three hundred feet plus from the residential area. Uh, the vent will be out in the front, in the island, and it will be, uh, surrounded with landscaping and stuff like that, you, you won't be able to see it. Um, also, the vent will be at least four hundred feet from the nearest home. And, uh, also, uh, all M D Q concerns regarding the fuel pumps, the underground storage tanks will be met. Um, you know, M D Q has up their, uh, requirements, and there's a lot going into, uh, these, uh, underground storage tanks and the, uh, fuel handling mechanisms and stuff like that. A lot of safety has been added on, a lot of, uh, oversight by M D Q. Now, there's a thirty-day testing and annual testing of different component systems that, um, protect, uh, the public from fires, fumes, uh, and different things of that magnitude and, uh, leakage, uh, of fuel to the, uh, into the ground to where it would go to the, you know, groundwater. The U S Ts and all the equipment has to be installed by certified installer with inspection, um, through M D Q, and, um, the owner is required to do some monitoring, but, uh, there are basically inspections every three days and annual testing of, of different items that, um, are part of this. Um, any, any exhausts due to venting, it's, it, it, or, uh, it's set up to where exhausts that are vented out of vent pipes, and you've probably seen the little fumes coming off of, you know, gas when you put it in your car or fill your lawnmower up or whatever, uh, that, those type of things evaporate fairly quickly into the atmosphere. If we had an issue, you know, with, uh, vent, uh, with vapors and different things of that magnitude, M D Q and the U S Department of Environmental Quality would've already addressed those matters, and, uh, right now, we're following, you know, all regulations. This, all of the city regulations will be followed for this development. We've gone, uh, the, uh, owner has gone overboard, we've given a residential type of, uh, structure, um, for the development, which, you know, with some of these other developments, we wouldn't have to do, I mean, we could go out there and put a regular, standard, commercial-type building. This right here is really, is gonna have a residential feel, it'll be a whole lot nicer, and it should be a project that you can say, well, look, they did this over here, you know, would you like to do, you know, do something like this, and think it's gonna look a lot better for the community and, uh, that type of thing. And also, the, um, the owner has agreed to build a portion of, uh, the relocation of 305, approximately eight hundred feet, which is a significant investment, and he's gonna, you know, it's, it's gonna be planned and done proper, and, uh, we've already done some coordination with MDOT for like the centerline grades, profiles and stuff like that. As this project goes on, we'll be meeting with, uh, Andy Swims and we'll be meeting with MDOT to ensure that we have the proper grade to set that at, so that there's no additional cost whenever MDOT does, um, go through with, you know, the 305 widening project. And, um, anyway, and also there's, uh, we have, uh, there is water and sewer, electrical, all the utilities are in the area, and, um, I think that's about, I think that's about got it covered for me. Y'all have any questions?
Hearing, hearing none, thank you, sir.
In conclusion, uh, it's aesthetically pleasing, and as the staff report says, the applicant, the owner of this property has met the conditions that are required by the ordinance of the City of Olive Branch, and we respectfully request that you accept the recommendation, the unanimous recommendation of the planning commission and, uh, grant the addition of fuel pumps to this convenience store location. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me ask a quick, are they, is it including, are you asking for, you keep saying fuel, is it diesel or is it gasoline, or is it both? Or is it, what is it?
Gas forms?
Gas only, no diesel?
Any other questions from the board? Thank you, applicant. At this time, public comments will begin for up to three minutes. At this time, I'm asking for people that are here to speak on behalf of or as a proponent for this development. You're here to ask this board to allow this development to occur. If you're here to speak on behalf of the development that you want it to occur, please come forward. And once you begin, uh, excuse me, after, after you complete, uh, your presentation, there's some blue cards on the very back on that counter, if you just complete that with the name and address and give that to the clerk, uh, to my right, your left, please.
My right.
Three minutes.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and Aldermen. To begin, I would like to thank and praise you for your leadership in moving the city to higher heights. I would just like to say that the developer has gone above and beyond to develop this store for the community, and the, the developer has, I'm really scared, I'm sorry.
Take your time.
Okay. They have helped the community a lot on every one of their stores. They have gave to schools, they have gave to the city of every city they, you know, they've had stores in, their gas prices are cheaper. They are willing to, you know, donate the one point two million dollars for the road realignment. The developer is really good for the community. I'm just, I am telling you this because I've worked for them for twelve years, and they have done great things in every community that they have got stores at, and they have been safe, and they make sure that every, all of their employees are safe and everyone around is safe. And they're gonna, they're gonna do their very best to make sure that their stores look good and everything stays clean and the crime rate is down, make sure nobody, you know, gets hurt or anything like that. The traffic right there, you know, they're gonna fix the road so there wouldn't be no traffic, uh, wrecks as much as possible. He does do what he says to. He, he, when he says he's gonna do something, he does it. He doesn't just talk about it, they actually do what they say they're gonna do. On every incident that they've had, they've always done this. So, um, I think that's about all I can say for now. They've always fed all the police officers.
Ma'am, before you leave, ma'am, 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 would you let, give the, to just state your name and address, and everyone who comes forward, give us your name and address, so we can have it for the record. Thank you.
My name is Angela Cobb, and it's eight five four four Corona Street, Lot one twenty-six, Olive Branch.
Thank you. And next, if this is a proponent for this development on behalf of it, come forward.
Kelly Hopper, eighty-nine-one Germantown Road, Olive Branch. I have worked, done work, done business with the, uh, ownership group, both their private residences, their rental homes, their commercial properties. The one thing I like about doing business with them is they do keep their word. He's a fair businessman, he's an honest businessman. As far as their gas stations, when I have had to work late, being a single woman driving, I've always felt comfortable and safe stopping at one of their gas stations. They don't permit loitering, they do keep all of their stations and their commercial properties clean. They also own some medical buildings in Germantown, but they want to make sure that everything is neat and clean and fits the aesthetic of the neighborhood, and they do give back to the community. They get involved in every community they own property in and do things to make the community better, so. And I do own land close to where the station is, so yes, I do, I think it'll be good for the area.
Thank you. Still calling for proponents on behalf of this development, and please state your name and address for the record when you begin.
My name is Amber, and I live at six eighty-two-four Murray Drive in Olive Branch. I would like to address the issue of health, crime and property values as they relate to the presence of the gas station in our area. Study shows that gas stations does not decrease value, it increases it. I forgot to pass these out. Um, there is a Chevron gas station at thirty-four ninety, Highway 305, south of the property that we are talking about today. I have marked in the location on red in the... Here's the other one.
Continue, ma'am.
I have marked it on, in red on the plot that I gave you. Lots two and four I have marked in blue are exceptionally large and are not comparable with the others. They're one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars each. Now, if we look at lots thirteen and twenty I have marked in yellow, um, lot thirteen backs up to the gas station is one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Lot twenty is further away from the gas station, and it is one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. In other words, lot twenty is, lot twenty is further away from the gas station and is cheaper than lot thirteen. What this tells us is that being close to a gas station does not reduce the value of the property, it only increases it. You hear from, uh, citizens against proposed developments and perceptions, they are not really reality as show, as you, as I've shown you. Gas stations do not cause all the problems you hear, uh, citizens claim they do. If they did, then the value of the properties closer to them would be less, but I showed you, they are not less, in fact, they're even more in some cases. I pray that you will not make the decision today based on perceptions and fear, but on the knowledge and wisdom as I presented to you. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm, I'm going... I'm gonna ask the audience to withhold the clapping, I, I appreciate that. Having sat on the bench twenty-five years, I love a emotional plea, but what the board needs to hear are the facts instead of the clapping, so we could all, both sides could continue clapping all night long, but let's just hold it to the facts, uh, kinda nothing, nothing but the facts, ma'am. So, anyone else that's a proponent on behalf of this development, on, on behalf of it, come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Aldermen. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Want to touch on the safety aspect of the service station. First, let me speak on the danger of misfortune relative to traffic. Issues, accidents arising from trucks slowing down, look at their city, you will see there's another gas station not too far from a funeral home. From here, being the same on Highway 305, contrary to the application for you, the gas station does not even have a designated lane that your trucks slow down and leave on the road in this site. There's a volume of traffic there is far higher than College Road in on 305 intersection. Yet, there's no conclusion evidence. I'm sorry, and thank you for the, um, opportunity to speak in a favor tonight. I'm sorry, my name is Vicki Burke. I live eighty-five forty-four, Crama, resident here twenty-plus years in Olive Branch, Mississippi. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other person wants to speak on behalf of this applicant?
I'm Jennifer Headley, I live at ten-two-ten Cockrum Drive in Cockrum. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Aldermen. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on what appears to be a simple application, but which so much has already been said. In the midst of so much noise and motions are sometimes too present to extent that they take away our reasoning, so I just want to wish to appeal to all of us to take a deep breath and have a moment of silence. I quickly want to touch on a few things. First and foremost, I ask you to trust your staff and planning commission. Everyone has looked at the details of this application, has recommended approval. The Mississippi Department of Transportation reviewed this application and determined it would be safe. That is why it approved and issued a driveway permit. Your city engineer reviewed and issued a memo that favors this development in all respects. Your planning staff did an extensive review of this application and recommended approval. The planning commission made up of ordinary citizens just like us, not some special interest groups whom you appointed because you trust their judgment, they unanimously, I repeat unanimously, recommended approval. They did not just rubber stamp this. They looked at the details, the facts, and every one of them, every single one of them determined that this is good for the city. Every neutral person that has looked at this, from the state to your staff to your planning commission, has determined that this will be safe and good for the city. I ask that you trust your staff and your planning commission and not just give us the impression that they do not really matter. By showing that you trust them and rely on their findings, they will work even harder to ensure that you are never misled and the city has the best of anything it can get. I'd also like to add, to run a city by creating winners and losers is not the best way to make public policies. Good policies are those that make everyone a winner in some way. This application is a win-win-win for everyone. What is in it for the city? The city gets at least four things. One, a new, at least 1.2 million dollar road. Two, less traffic compared to some other already permitted uses.
Thank you, ma'am. That three minutes are up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on behalf of this applicant?
My name is Carrie Arnold and I live at 5588 Sycamore Drive, Cockrum. I travel on Highway 305 every day and often through the intersection of 305 and College. I have two teenage drivers, one who is on a permit and one who has her own car. They also frequently pass through this intersection. Of course, there's a hill there. As you travel 305, you'll know there's lots of hills and curves along the road. One-stop gas station up Ihalia and 305 is on the north side of a much larger hill. RC's gas station is in the middle of a large curve with a higher speed limit and hitting neighboring driveways. And yet, the most dangerous intersection on 305 is at Bethel, where there is no gas station. So, to say that allowing approved convenience store to add fueling pumps would increase motor vehicle accidents and even extreme of saying increased fatalities is pretty far-fetched. As a mother of teen drivers, I would not support something that would put my children in any danger. I only see good coming from the developer's plans. The position of the building will open up visibility. Adding turning lanes will add much-needed additional width to both College and 305. The developer is contributing to the future plans of College. And this is how adding additional businesses to our area should be handled. It is good for our community and our taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jessica Leek. I live at 10068 Fox Chase Drive, Olive Branch, Mississippi, 38654. As an Olive Branch taxpayer, I see nothing but a benefit for this project. The generous donation that developer is giving towards the road repair will lessen the financial burden of our city that already has a tight budget. This is a very well-designed gas station and I'm certain that it will become a trendsetter for future commercial developers of other types. Other Olive Branch residents have been addressing concerns and sharing nationwide statistics. I'd like to focus on this area specifically. Let's narrow down on the school boundaries for this area. Some parts are the city, some are the county. There's six gas stations within the Lewisburg district. Have those gas stations attracted any awful transient situations, any murders, any kidnappings? No, it has not. So statistically, our gas station is gonna be a very good thing for our community. Aldermen, this develop, this developer has gone above and beyond to get approval for not only for the city's planning commission and yourselves, but us residents. They have made adjustments to the plans, paid for traffic studies, consulted with state highway officials, some required, but some have just been to ease the minds of the residents. If I could vote, I would definitely say yes, and I hope yours will be too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else on behalf of the application? Seeing none. Now, I've taken, anyone that likes to speak in opposition, you're opposed to this application, come forward one at a time for your three minutes. And also, please state your name and address for the clerk.
My name is John Norman. I live at 7970 Elizabeth and Payne Park, just right down the street from where they're proposing this. My biggest concern is crime, and I think we all have crime, should be one of our big concerns. The slide that was presented tonight, again, it was told that a convenience store without gas pumps have more crimes than convenience stores with gas pumps. If you've ever done risk analysis, you take that chart and you do a convenience store and you add the gas stations and you realize that you've increased your risk just by the statistics that were presented tonight. So, I have, that really bought me a question, but I'm just gonna read you some stuff. August 19th, Memphis Police Department is investigating a gas station shooting that left one man dead and another man injured on Saturday morning. Memphis Police responded to the shooting at 10:00 a.m. at the Z Market on South Perkins Road, just above the state line here. August 18th, Rapper's brother shot and killed at BP Gas Station on South Parkway in Memphis. August 17th, Memphis shooting occurred at a Valero Gas Station on Airways Boulevard and Ball Road. August 13th, carjacking at a Valero Station with three males, one with a 9mm in Memphis at 6:00 p.m. on Knight Arnold Road. July 27th, this is in Michigan, but again, criminal attempts to hold up Marathon Gas Convenience Store, but customer with concealed carry shoots the perpetrator. On July 8th, now we're in Olive Branch, around 10:20, offers respond to a scene of a robbery, uh, no, excuse me, we're not in Olive Branch yet, but at the Marathon Gas Station on Airways Boulevard. Man enters gas station armed with handgun and demanding money. January 18th, Murphy's Gas at Goodman and Davison, right up, just up the road here, robbed by a assailant with silver handgun. July 14, 22, Olive Branch, attempted carjacking with shots fired at Shell Station at 305.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next person to speak in opposition, please come forward.
Good evening. Chastity Ross, 3860 Mitchell Grove Road East. I'm one of the main houses behind the gas station with the pool. Retired military, 20 years. I would like to start off by saying that they brief well, the presentation, it brief well. But how long is it gonna be before the upkeep of it? I have a swimming pool. My grandkids be in that swimming pool. How long would it be before my swimming pool is contaminated? And possibility of my, me and my grandkids getting cancer. Our neighborhood, which is Mitchell's Corner West, is about 75% military, retired, previously serving, or I mean currently serving, or have served. We chose Olive Branch, Mississippi, in that area specifically for the quietness and where we was located at. We had no idea we was being annexed to Olive Branch until after we closing our houses. Our houses over there, I closed on my house at 500,000. I do not want the property of my value of my house to go down. I have served my country for 20 years and I'm retired, trying to relax and enjoy life. I don't want a gas station there.
Thank you. Next person in opposition to the application?
Hello. My name is Petra Jones. I'm also backed up to the proposed development 3878 Mitchell Grove Road East, Olive Branch, Mississippi. So, I stand before you as two persons. I stand before you as the homeowner that doesn't want a gas station behind my home. I didn't, when I moved there, I was told by the county at the time that there was nothing that could be there. Nothing proposed to be in the back where the trees are. So, imagine my delight when I got a sign a year later saying that, hey, they wanna put gas stations on this lot that was told that nothing could be there. So, the other hat that I wear is a real estate professional. When I sell houses to potential buyers, even though your studies may show that a lot that's for sale that has not had a home put on it yet is priced higher near the gas station, but it doesn't matter until it sells. So, those properties are still active and for sale. They have not sold. So, until it sells and for whatever it sells for, to determine the value or the effect of a gas station, we will not know. So, on that note, I just say, yes, I think it will hurt my property value. As a real estate professional, I've been in this area since 2006. Yes, I do think it will have a negative impact on my home and my neighbor's home. We actually live here. We're not driving by it. We actually live here. We hear the accidents that no one has on record. Every morning, we can hear the traffic. We hear it all. So, I don't know where the data is to say that they're not accidents. They're actually accidents. We hear them. So, like I said, I don't want gas stations back there. I think it's a negative impact on my value, my neighbor's value, and everybody within a mile radius. If we decide to start moving around and decreasing property values, it hurts the area as a whole.
Thank you. Next person?
Hi, I'm Kathy Lambert, the homeowner at 8860 College Road. My husband and I, I got out of the Marine Corps and my husband and I have made that home, our final home. We've only been in that home three years and now we have a gas station possibly going across the street from us. We don't want that either. I sit in my front yard and I stare at College Road. I walk up and down College Road every single day, pretty well with my dogs. So, I see 50, 60, 70 mile-per-hour vehicles just speed right past both of my dogs and I with no care. So, when you put, even if you, they want to put that dead-end lane, add a 60 mile-an-hour, 70 mile-an-hour car heading eastbound with a dead-end lane. We've already had several crashes. Last Thursday, there were three crashes before 5:25. I was behind all three. None of them had anything to do with each other. While these women behind me all testified in favor of this gas station, if you look all of their addresses up, none of them live anywhere near us. They live in Cockrum. They live over by Kroger. None of them are staring at what we will be staring at with our family. The last time this petition was brought, the opening statement from the person bringing this stated, verbatim, if you rewind it, said, "I wouldn't want the gas station behind my home either." So, neither do we. If he doesn't want it, I don't want it. Everything that comes from it, look at the gas stations in Olive Branch. Look at the communities that sit around those gas stations. They all pretty well are rentals because homeowners are moving. I was told last time, well, if I didn't like it, maybe I should have bought further south to Bahalia. I live in, I work in Memphis. I'm a realtor as well. I don't want to go from Bahalia all the way up there. This is our home and I plead with you. If you don't want it in all of your backyards with your family, this is my husband and I's final home. And I'm not threatening you that I'm going to sell my home and move away. I'm asking you to understand. I stare at that silly Dollar General sign. It comes all the way across that lot, all the way up to my front door, which used to be nice and pretty and dark. I just ask you to put that in the back of your mind. Vehicles that come, if you're headed southbound on 305 and turn into Dollar Store, be careful.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board of Aldermen. My name is Allison Farrington. I live at 3930 Mitchell Grove Road East. I'm one of the petitioners that signed the petition for the supermajority. This property backs right up to my backyard. And what I see in the pretty pictures here doesn't look like my view from my backyard. I have a pool that I'm concerned will have negative effects from having a gas station. My back patio sits seven feet or eight feet above the grade down to the creek. The creek that is there, I promise you, it may be dry during the summer months, but as soon as it rains, there is a massive amount of water that moves through my backyard and into Bellmore Lakes and down the river, the watershed. So, I would encourage you to consider that. Consider the crime that is a potential there or any retail space. Consider the gas fumes, the risk of fire, the runoff from the, the gas pumps or the, you know, the, the customer that spills gas on the ground and it runs into the water. Consider the smell of the dumpsters and the food and the heat and the garbage trucks that'll come at 2:00 in the morning to unload in my backyard. Consider the sound of the gas tanker trucks pulling in and out of that facility as I'm trying to sleep at night. Consider the fact that, yes, the lights may shine right down from the gas station, but what about the headlights pulling in and out of my backyard? Consider about how many other gas stations are on 305 that haven't even opened yet because they're right there. There's a QT. That's a great place for a gas station. There's another one going in at a different corner that hasn't even opened yet. Why do we need one more? Consider that before you put something like this in my backyard. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, ma'am, Mr. Wallace wants to ask a question.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned the creek running in your backyard. Now, I'm not sure if it's water rungs or creek, but I've been out and seen this with Supervisor Medlin and it's quite substantial when it does rain.
Mm-hmm.
Has that not been addressed? When, I came out just as it was coming in the city, me and Supervisor Jesse Medlin went out. Is that not, is it still running like that when it's heavy rain?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. All the way, you can see it when it rains along College Road for all the improvements that Mitchell Grove Road, or that Mitchell's Corner West made. You can see it. And it, every time it rains, there is a massive amount of water. And I'd also consider you to look at where that creek lies according to the plat because it's in my backyard.
Okay.
So, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next person that's opposed?
Thank you. My name is Judy Swallow. I live in the Estates of Southern Trails, 8869 DeHart Road, Olive Branch. I'm going to repeat some of the things I think that others have said, but I would like for you to walk in the shoes of these property owners who are adjacent to this gas station property. How would you like for a, for a gas station to be in your backyard? How would you like to spend thousands of dollars on improvement for, say, putting in a pool or a backyard oasis and then have this property right behind you? You wouldn't even be able to enjoy your home, you're not able to enjoy your home with that. I can't imagine that property values won't be impacted by having a gas station there. If someone wants to sell their house, I believe that that gas station would have an impact on whether a buyer would want that house. The houses in our neighborhood are 500,000 plus, and I'm talking about the entire area. We're talking Southern Trails, we're talking Mitchell's West, we're talking Bellmore. All of those houses are half-million dollar homes or better. We don't have a gas station desert in our area either. As they've said, that we've got stations at 305 and Church, we have station at Nail, we have Sandage, we have Goodman. We have plenty of gas stations. Not only that, we have the Cedar View down there, which in the mornings, when they start frying their food, permeates the entire neighborhood where I live in the Estates of Southern Trails. My husband and I walk early and we can smell all of that cooking. There will be more traffic, hazardous traffic conditions. Those pictures, I don't know where they came from, but I see a whole lot more traffic in that neighborhood. I was behind a line of traffic today because of going to the library for a DAR meeting and I was behind a line of traffic from College Road and they were, we were in line all the way up to where I could see where Bell Ridge is. So, it's, and the other day, I was sitting at the traffic light. An 18-wheeler got caught with the caution light. He didn't realize that it was gonna be a caution light on him that quickly. I was sitting in the left turn lane to go over to College on the west.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
He sped by me at I don't know how many miles an hour.
Thank you.
And one more thing I want to say is that at a meeting recently, the mayor talked about the thousands of cars that are travel, the 305 corridor every day, and I believe that that many cars go in that corridor every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Megan Oyer, 3930 Mitchell Grove Road East. I'm going to bring up a couple of things that maybe haven't been mentioned yet. Clearly, the issue here is the accessory of gas pumps to an already approved convenience store. When we purchased our property in April of 2021, literally days before the annexation, coming from out of state, our only contact was the developer. They assured us that the property behind us was Zone C4, but that it was absolutely excluded, written in the zoning that it would not allow gas pumps. And that was a deciding factor for us in purchasing that well over a half a million dollar property is that we were assured by zoning, and I did my due diligence, and I looked up the zoning and found the wording that said excluding gas pumps before I purchased that. We were not in our house eight weeks, and we had Steve Bigelow knocking on our door to tell us that they were going to apply and that gas pumps were coming to our backyard. And we better prepare for a fight. We've been fighting now for well over two years since we've been there. Gas pumps are not just an accessory. They bring in fumes. They're flammable. They bring in a different operating hours. Nobody's going to a doctor's office or a bank at three in the morning, but they're going to a gas station, and they're pulling into my backyard, and their headlights are coming in my bedroom window. Twenty-four hours a day, not to mention the sound and the, clearly, we've mentioned the safety of gas stations. The accessory of a gas pump is way more than just an accessory to a store. It brings in a whole different clientele. It changes the operating hours. It brings in diesel fumes. It brings in diesel trucks. It brings in a whole different clientele than any of the other properties that are allowed, and I concede they are allowed. And I'm willing to take my chances with what might go in there to keep the gas pumps out of my backyard. And in relation to the creek, if you look at the overhead drone photos that are in the presentation, you can see the creek in there. It does run on our property line, and it is a significant watershed. They also mentioned that, thank you.
Thank you. Before the next person stands, if you are here in opposition of this application, and you may not necessarily want to speak, but you want the board to know that you're in opposition of it, please stand. Okay. Thank you. Be seated. Anyone else?
My name is Bill Smith, and I live at 4410 John Joseph Drive in Olive Branch. There's just something that I'm concerned about because of an incident I had personally, and that is I drive that intersection a lot. And as I was going south on 305 and was in, going to get in the left turn lane, somebody coming north on 305 decided they were going to get in the left turn lane a little early to turn into Dollar General, and we almost collided. Now, what you're talking about is adding another business that cars going south on 305 are going to want to share that left turn lane again with, with the vehicles that are already trying to turn left onto College Road and trying to turn left into Dollar General. And then I didn't understand whether this was addressed or not, but if you change College Road and straighten it out, you're going to shorten on 305, you're going to shorten that left turn lane for everybody. So now you're adding a business that's going to want people turning left into their establishment, and you're going to shorten the left turn lane. And I don't think that was addressed by your staff member. And the other thing was, in the pictures that were put up there, I didn't see a deceleration lane eastbound on College Road. And was that ever addressed? That would be my question. And I think that should be addressed because College Road is also a very busy road. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Mandy Bowers, 3827 Mitchell's Corner Road West. I live in the neighborhood across the street from the plan development. Couple of things that I just want to point out and bring up again for consideration. While I appreciate the traffic study photos that seem to have been taken today, one of the things that that analysis pointed out to was the heavy congestion in the mornings, the heavy congestion in the evenings, but not so much during the day. Well, when do people get gas? They stop to get gas when they go to work, or they stop to get gas or convenience store stuff, whatever they need when they come home. So we're going to be adding congestion at that intersection, which leads to my second point, which while those photos had cars, I did not see any eighteen wheeler vehicles. And we all know that 305 is a major thoroughfare between Memphis and 78 and 269. I work for a trucking company. I understand deceleration of an eighteen wheeler that's carrying thousands of pounds of freight. So not suggesting that eighteen wheelers are going to turn into the gas station, but I am suggesting that my sophomore daughter in college is, and the eighteen wheeler behind her is not going to be able to stop in time to let her get in there. That is a concern around the traffic. The gentleman addressed my other point, which was the turn lane, which I agree. Now you've got people coming this way to go to Dollar General, people going this way to go to the gas station, people trying to turn on College. I do not think, even if they widen 305, that one turn lane is sufficient to account for that turning traffic all within that short space. So aside from the health issues that putting gas tanks close to residential areas are going to bring up, we need to consider, and I would ask, that if a traffic study were actually to be done, it look at the type of vehicles that actually travel that road because we saw one dump truck, which we know because we live there, lots more than one go by, and the eighteen wheelers that run from the new gas station in front of the distribution center one mile down the road past the other seven that are already on 305 to 269. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you, guys, for your patience and listening and questioning. I can really tell y'all are really paying attention and really focusing tonight. I thank you so much for that. There is a picture that you presented today of the traffic, and it shows a car actually in that turning left lane going into the Dollar General from one of your photoshops. And what you see in that picture is actually what happens. Traffic stops behind it. So you clear that light there, and then you stop because someone's in that turning lane, and there's not sufficient room for traffic to clearly go around them once there's more than one car there. So that is going to be a difficult situation. Something else that I've not heard being discussed is already they've started construction going in that same direction on the right side that the service station is going to be placed on, about a block down from that intersection. They've already started opening up the new subdivision, cutting that in. And I don't know if we've taken in consideration the increase of traffic and the increase of the number of people that are going to be needing to use that road and that thoroughfare. So I would, I thank you for that. I also wanted to use a little common sense in listening to us tonight. We actually live there. We're not formal speakers. I was really concerned that the people that came before us on the pro side, they had prepared documents, and it was all based on information that we heard for the first time tonight from our presenter. And that kind of gave me a little bit of concern how that was set up that way. But that's just my concern. I just wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor, please ask them to state their name too and where they live.
As a reminder, I do need to get you to state your name and address when you begin.
My name is Stephen Bishop. I live at 8810 DeHart in the Estates of Southern Trails. And there's a lot of concerns that haven't been addressed. We all, we saw the beautiful computer rendering showed no houses behind that gas station. All we saw was clear land. Secondly, it shows the second opening going to that stub of College that they're going to try to realign. Now, we were told there's only one entrance and exit. Are there going to be one or two? Thirdly, nobody even addressed the fact that, like somebody said, when's the tanker going to pull up? He's got to turn in there. He's got to block traffic. We never saw any, we saw school buses in that great presentation. But when we were told about traffic and they had shots of it, either that was in the summer or somebody missed the school buses because they come by our house at 6:30 in the morning. When it's dark and they go out on that road and there's traffic like that, what's going to happen to the school kids? I mean, that's fall and spring, daylight savings time. And it's always shown in beautiful summertime. We've had ice. We've had snow. We've had huge rains. And I come up and down that street. I have to work in Memphis. So I go up, down 305 every day. And every day, there's an accident somewhere up and down there. And once there's one accident, or there's even just them trimming the trees, the traffic's blocked. They got a flagman. How's that going to work out? It's not. The amount of traffic that has to go in there to service that station, you said they're going to make it smaller so it won't have storage. I used to work in a little convenience store. We had a little back room. We stored all our stuff. And will they promise you they won't, if you give this approval? Are they going to promise you they're not going to sell tobacco? And will you have any control over that? These are things to think about. And since there are kids in the neighborhood, and the neighborhood I live in has a number of young children, what's going to stop them from just walking right over and picking up something or walking right over and getting hit? There's so many things that weren't covered, and they're going to sell cigarettes and beer. When's it going to be the first time we have a? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Hi, my name is Kendall Hodges. I live at 9106 Mitchell's Corner Road South. I just wanted to point out that several of the people that came up here and spoke for the developer were paid employees of the developer. And then some others, they don't even live near where we're talking about. I live absolutely right in the immediate area across the street. I have young children. There are many in our neighborhood. They like to play outside. We just put in a pool. As a homeowner, it's concerning. As a Realtor for our area, licensed here, have been since 2019, it's concerning for our property values in this area. One thing that I think you touched on, and so did she, there is a new development with over 100 homes just north of that intersection that is under construction. The land's being cleared. That's going to bring in, you know, double that many cars, however many homes they build. And there's another development, the orchard that's back behind it, just a little while, a little ways back. So there's going to be quite a bit more traffic, I feel like, at that intersection, and there is more than we're in those pictures. So it's concerning for safety, health. It's concerning for our health. The fumes and the toxic chemicals that could be leaked in the ground from the spills and everything that everyone else has touched on is concerning. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hello.
My name's Bonnie Delashmet. I live at 8375 Bellmore Lakes Drive. I've lived there for 20 years. And I've said this before to the planning commission, I'm going to say it one more time. For 18, 19 years, we did a great job of protecting our property value when we were part of the county. And it seems now for the last year, year and a half, since we've been annexed in part of the city, we're constantly talking to boards about what not to do to crash our property value. It just doesn't seem right that since annexation, the whole new world of possibilities for property value attrition has been presented to us. There are two things I'd like to point out. On Sunday morning, September the 10th, at 5:40 a.m., there was a very serious car accident at the intersection of 305 and College Road. I was there. I was on the way to the airport. I don't know who gave you the data about the accidents, but it's not correct at all. I saw the ambulances. I saw the police department respond. I saw the people go to the hospital, the tow trucks, the glass, the carnage. I saw it all. And it's not rare. It's very often that there are car accidents there. I, too, went to the city and asked for the data. She told me the same thing. They had nothing since annexation. I went to the county, and they wouldn't respond. I went to the Mississippi Public Commission. They said, the Public Safety Commission said, go back to the county. So it seems that the traffic data just isn't all that accessible to the regular citizen. Perhaps you guys can get it. Another thing that I would like to point out is that when the planning commission turned this project down the first time, the traffic count that was presented to them was 14,000 cars a day, which is probably less than half of what actually occurs. If you look at the actual traffic counts, it's probably between 25,000 to 28,000 cars per day. And that does include diesel trucks, dirt movers, and potable water. Another thing that I would like to point out is that we did not hear very much about a plan for the possibility of an underground tank leak. Who pays for that? I know that taxpayers usually end up footing the bill when the watershed is poisoned and the groundwater is contaminated, and I don't want that to happen either.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello.
My name is Brian Gartshore. I live at 7900 Jones Cove in Olive Branch. And I just, I just wanted to mention or ask, basically, it's a rhetorical question. Please consider that, who is benefiting from this? What does this project bring to our community? And from what I can tell, and I live there, we have what this, this business offers, and we don't need gas pumps there. As people have described, all within two miles, there's four gas stations. And I just, I'm amazed at to what length people are going to push this particular project. But I understand that legally, it was zoned for convenience stores and, you know, or other uses, commercial uses. A restaurant wouldn't be a bad idea. We can't change what they did in 2005, but we can ask you to, to please consider that, that this really isn't going to serve a useful purpose for us, and, and we're the people that live there. And we count on you, because you represent us, to, to look out for our best interests. So I'm just asking that you do that for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michael Downs. I live at 3903 Mitchell Grove Road East, which is across the street from everybody that spoke, that you spoke to that has their backyard back up to this potential development. I can tell you that every one of them was here today because they know, and you know, you don't want a gas station in your backyard. When we bought homes there, there was no indication we were going to have a gas station in our backyard. We all spent a significant amount of money to be where we're at, knowing, I, I knew we were getting annexed. I knew that I was going to be paying Olive Branch taxes. I've lived in Olive Branch the majority of my life. I grew up here. I went to Olive Branch High School. I'm happy to be in Olive Branch, but I don't want a gas station in my backyard, and you wouldn't either. I understand that you have a responsibility to develop the economics of our city, and I appreciate that. And there are many ways that we can do that. If there are other commercial developments there, they would still be following the same guidelines that other developments of, in the city of Olive Branch have to follow. They're building and other, other things. Maybe it's not going to be as the same as this, but it still matters. And I, I mean, I just, I appreciate that you have listened to us, and thanks for your time.
Thank you. Any last public comments regarding opposition? Any last comments regarding opposition? Seeing none, the applicant or applicant representative is allowed to respond to issues raised in public comments. And with this applicant coming forward, the public hearing is now closed, so the applicant may respond to any of the issues raised.
Mayor, members of the board, in response to the opposition, one of the issues was crime, and I think the evidence that's been presented through the staff report is clear that gas pumps alone, and remember, the application is simply to amend the project text to include gas pumps along with the convenience store, that gas pumps alone do not increase crime in any way. in any way. In fact, the evidence suggests that it may deter it. There were questions about the creek, and I would ask engineer Byron Houston to address the, how the creek's going to be handled in this development.
As far as the creek goes, first of all, we have to have a stormwater permit to keep stormwater out. The site will have to have a general permit with MDQ, and the stormwater will come through the city and the EQ. Also, as far as underground storage tanks, starting in two thousand and eight, MDQ requires underground storage tanks to be encapsulated, so there's a redundant safety measure to where if there is a leak in the tank, then all materials are captured by the design that's put in place.
One other issue that the opposition raised was that about buffer, and we would remind the board to look closely at the design, which leaves the natural buffer of trees that are currently existing, plus addition of trees, and the eight-foot fence. So that, that should properly buffer the development from the neighboring properties. But again, remember, it's not the gas pumps that really affect that part of, of the development. But the buffer is there for that protection. That said, the evidence before this board, my view, of course, is that, that there's no adverse impact on this neighborhood with the, with the development as presented, that would be created simply by amending the project text to add gas pumps to this commercial use of a convenience store that is currently already permitted. And would ask again respectfully that the, that the board grant the applicant's request to amend the project text to add gas pumps.
Thank you.
Let me ask y'all one thing before you, before you leave. One of the last speakers mentioned something about selling cigarettes. Y'all will sell cigarettes, but the other, what we were talking about before was if we opened up another retail shop, would have a tobacco shop or a vape shop. We're not saying anything about a convenience store can't sell cigarettes.
Correct. That's right.
Okay, I just want to make sure that was clear. That's, that's, that's two totally different scenarios there.
Yeah, the distinction is that we're just asking for gas pumps for a convenience store that operates as we all familiar with.
Right.
If, if other developments were there, we don't know what that would be. It could possibly be something less designed.
Let me ask a quick question. It's kind of, kind of, just for curiosity. You said you were authorized to make any changes and amend or meet the needs of the citizens to work with them. Why not just build the station the way it is and not put pumps and cause all the confusion?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you very well.
You said that you were authorized by the develop, by the builder or owner to make any amendments or meet any needs needed. Why not build the station the way it is without pumps?
We, we, the concessions that he made was, that we made for the development is we, we've produced a architectural change of the building, which is going to be much nicer, look like a residence. And we put a more strenuous buffer zone in than what we're required to do. And we also, we're developing College Road. I mean, there's many things that have gone into this design to take care of that type of stuff. And that's just one of the sticking points, you know, I mean, that's the whole idea behind even coming here. Well, I wouldn't, we wouldn't have to come here if we weren't trying to get pumps. We already are permitted by right to put a convenience store there without pumps. And, or we could put any kind of retail development or restaurant or, you know, any of the uses specified in the, in the C four zoning that is on record. And, and that's, we've done everything that we could do that my developer feels like we could do to, you know, compromise with the, with the public and to meet the city requirements and exceed the city requirements and to give back to the community. What I, what I see commonly in convenience stores is they have gas pumps. What I don't commonly see is the significance, the aesthetics of this particular design, the way it's set up. So I think it would clearly be an amenity to the city of Olive Branch with no harm whatsoever to the neighborhood with those four gas pumps designed the way they are in this development. Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant?
Mayor Adams, I don't have a question of the applicant, but I would ask your permission if I could do this. It seems like a lot of folks who were in opposition have left, unfortunately. I'm just curious, maybe again by show of standing, knowing that C-stores and retail and restaurants, et cetera, are already permitted by right, how many people here who oppose the gas stations, if you don't mind standing, would welcome a restaurant, a C-store, whatever else is permitted by right, versus gas station? Thank you. How many of you would like to see a gas station? Please stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Earhart. Does the board have any questions of the applicant's staff? Any questions at all at this point? Any motions?
Let me make a couple of comments before we start making motions. First, Asong, let me tell you, that was the best planning thing I've seen in my term on the board. That was very detailed, and it answers, to my satisfaction, almost every concern, and they were valid concerns, that everybody stood up and had a concern, they were very valid. I don't blame you for asking those questions. But I thought the answers that were in that staff report answered most of those questions. I know somebody said, well, what about crime? And you had the two together. I'm not going to argue with FBI statistics with somebody that may not be a law enforcement person. Those, those questions that were asked by the citizens, to my satisfaction, were answered in the staff report. Good job.
Yes, indeed.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon? Any other comments?
I want to make a comment. Yeah, it's hard for this alderman, I'm sitting here looking at it, because, you know, we got a plan that's already approved in the county. And to us, it does not look very good. And they can build it with less buffer and everything. And this seems to be a lot better plan. Now, the problem I have with is three oh five. You know, that, that's the question that I have, you know, it's just, the traffic is horrible. Everybody knows that. But I thought the developer, trying to screen it for the people there, going over and above that would be as good. But as you can tell, we have problems too, listen to, you know, we try to please the people in the audience, try to help the developer. You know, I, I do think the developer did, went over the above trying to cut down from two buildings to one, and with, and I don't think it will have any, you won't have any room space attached to the building, right? It'd be a convenience store, not like they've been building all these now, adding two or three bays on there, and adding a liquor store or something like that. I mean, but I still have a problem with three oh five, and I don't know when that will be addressed. I'm just wanting to kind of make, talk out loud my thinking, and want y'all to understand what we go through here, trying to make the right decision.
Asong. I think that's about, I'm sorry, George. I think that's about the best presentation I believe I've ever seen done. I can't imagine it being much better and thorough. However, I'm like George, I got a problem with three oh five. I think it may be the prettiest gas station I believe I've ever seen. I can't imagine a gas station being as pretty as that. That's prettier than my house. But I still got a problem with three oh five, and I, and there's no plans in the future to address it, near future. So I'm, I'm kind of like George. Gas stations don't generally bother me, but I don't have a five hundred thousand dollar house sitting in front of it either. I live amongst a bunch of gas stations, and they're safer than most houses. I grew up with a family that owned two gas stations. And they, we had above-ground storage, we had a lower-ground storage. They're not that bad. They're not that hard to clean up. But I got a problem with traffic on three oh five, a real problem. And I don't think, no matter how much, how pretty and nice the work they're doing, I don't think it's going to fix it until the streets actually widen. So.
We've talked a little bit about three oh five. The point that I come back to, Mr. Mayor, you said tomorrow, you're going to, or sometime you're going to have people here look at three oh five. If we sat down and gave a legislature and Department of Transportation, what do we want in three oh five highway? We'd like a five-lane road. Two lanes each way and a turn lane. That's exactly what we'll have in front of this development. We're going to have five lanes, when they add their acceleration, de-acceleration lane. You got one on the other side by Dollar General, and you got your regular north and south routes and a turn lane. So we're going to have exactly what we've, we would ask for them to put in place. And that's what we'll be asking for when our, when we have this ride through with our legislatures. So I know three oh five, the rest of the area is, is two-lane and, and nothing we can do about that. But the area in front of the development is going to be what we want.
Any other comments from the board? Any motions?
I'm going to make a motion to deny based on traffic.
Motion to deny based on traffic made by Alderman Wallace. Is there a second?
Second.
Who was that? Alderwoman Henderson, second motion. Any discussion? Like to do...
Vote yes as opposed to vote for the motion.
Yep, very, very good. So the alderman, as, as roll call takes place on the vote, if you vote yes for Alderman Wallace's motion, you're voting to deny the application. If you vote yes, you're voting to deny the application. Ms. Stewart, would you poll the board?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Dickerson?
No.
Earhart?
Before I vote, I want to make a comment. With all due respect to our applicant's willingness to make great concessions, and I think it's an excellent design. And I think sometimes great ideas sometimes have the wrong timing and right, wrong location. I would like to say this, that the Constitution of the United States says that government should serve the people. And I have nothing against anyone going in business, I'm a business person myself. But after tonight, seeing that the people have clearly spoken their wishes, I'm going to vote yes to the motion that it's denied, because I think clearly the people have spoken. And I took a pledge to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the state to represent people. So my vote is yes to support the motion.
Hamilton? Anderson?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Supermajority.
Well, the supermajority's not the fact. If the motion passed, it would have the action.
So the supermajority is not critical at this point. The motion passes to deny this application by a vote of five to two. Motion passes to deny the application. Thanks to everyone who presented and spoke tonight. Continuing, continuing down the agenda, please. Item two, public hearing date for consideration of application to amend the project text and development plan for Robinson Crossing Plan Unit Development submitted by Joe Frank Lauderdale on behalf of project developer Barry Bridgforth Pleasant Hill Land and Development Company. The purpose is to make minor amendments to the project text to reflect conditions in the subdivision as already built and proposed through its completion, including corrections to setbacks and updates to the designs of streets and the sidewalks and walkways. The two hundred and thirty-one point six plus or minus acre property is on PUD Plan Unit Development and is located at the southeast corner Malone Road and Church Road. Public hearing date was set for this date on September the fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Staff report?
Yes, sir. A few brief staff comments on this. As you mentioned, our subject property is just over two hundred and thirty acres in size.
We'll have to wait just one moment. Would the bailiff ask to hold, hold it down in the lobby, please? Continue, Mr. Gamble.
Just going back for some background information, the county approved the Robinson Crossing PUD project text and master plan back in two thousand and three. The project was originally named Annabelle, and then later changed to Robinson Crossing. And so just like we have an Olive Branch on many of our plans, we have a PUD project text and a master plan, and that serves as the development code for this particular property. And that's important to what we're doing going forward here in this particular application. Five of the first seven recorded subdivision phases, and we have an eighth in progress, were approved and recorded under county jurisdiction. And then this property, Robinson Crossing, was annexed into the city effective on May twenty-eighth of two thousand and twenty-one. And so when that property was annexed, this master plan and project text still remained as the development code for the property. Again, that being approved back in the early two thousands by the DeSoto Board of Supervisors. So the city has reviewed and approved some subdivision phases since the annexation. Today out there, we have a total of just under three hundred platted lots. We have about two hundred and twenty-five or so homes that are already built in this particular subdivision. This particular table shows you the different phases of the subdivision, what's above the black line there are all of the ones that were approved prior to the annexation. And then we have the two that were approved post-annexation, sections G and F, and then we also approved a preliminary plat for section H. What this star represents, this tan color, is everything that's in Area Three of the master plan, which is shown over here on the right-hand side of your screen. So as we've approved those various subdivision phases, we had a couple of issues that arose. The project text, or that development code for this particular property for Area Three requires a twenty thousand square foot minimum lot size, forty-foot front, twenty-five-foot rear, and fifteen-foot side setbacks. And while all of the lots that we've approved have met that minimum size requirement, we have approved on those subdivision plats, side setbacks that were five feet as opposed to fifteen feet. And then also, you may recall, over the last couple of years, we had several discussions as the subdivision plat phases were going through about the different types of road cross-sections that had been bailed out in Robinson Crossing. And those were things that deviated off of what that project text originally said. So we had, if you go out there, we have a result of a mix of road widths, we have pathways, we have some roads with curb gutter and sidewalks, other roads with open swale and sidewalks, other roads that are widened out with striped lanes. And so trying to, we've tried to, as we've gone through these approvals, tried to kind of tighten all of that down and figure out how to best make that work. This is the intersection, show you a close-up of the intersection that's located right here on the next slide with a more recent updated aerial map. And you can see we've had a couple of homes that were built in the section F, and this is where we've had these five-foot side setbacks. I don't know if you can see, there's a property line faintly through there and faintly through there, and you can see the homes are located within five feet of that. It's a little bit of a deviation, again, from what the project text says. And then on our section F, as we approved that, we noted that these different cross-sections that were coming together at this intersection needed transition. So up from this area, section G, you can kind of see the homes that were under construction here. We have curb gutter and sidewalk coming in from this area. And then if you come up from Woodgate Lane, this is a section that has a open swale, no curb, and a four-foot wide sidewalk coming up in this direction. And then over from this direction, Parish Row, you have a wider street, it was thirty feet wide, that had... It was thirty feet wide that had stripes on each side for either pedestrian or bike path. So how you bring all of those three together was something that we discussed as we went through these different, uh, plat phases. You may recall seeing this, this was a slide that we used back in two thousand and twenty-one that showed these different cross-sections and how were they were supposed to kind of come together at that intersection and properly transition. And this was a picture we showed back at that time. And this shows you something that's in Robinson Crossing that you don't wanna do. You can see that widened-out road striped right here, and then a sidewalk just ends into the grass. And so you wanna do something like that to make sure that if you're walking, you don't end up in the grass. Or if you're riding a bike, you can make it over. So very briefly through this slide, um, well, as we approved, um, section F preliminary and final plat, as well as section H, we, uh, put some conditions of approval in there. And the first condition, I won't read it, but that basically says that the applicant was required to file the project text amendment that you have before you tonight. Uh, we gave them instructions for the cross-sections that they had to build and how they were supposed to be brought together and required transitions. When section H preliminary plat came through, we basically repeated that same requirement that this PD amendment had to be filed. So the point I wanna make is that we've asked the applicant to go ahead and make this filing. It's pretty simple. What it does is it changes the side setbacks in that Area Three from fifteen feet minimum to five feet and a total of twenty-five feet. So on one side of the house, you have a shorter setback, and it's widened out on the other side. Um, and then we added a, uh, cross-section map that's shown over here that shows the various, um, cross-sections keyed to that map. And then we have a requirement that proper transitions be made. So what you see here is the street cross-section A, and this is new being added to the PUD. And section A is what's shown on this map, and this is Parish Row, shown in that yellow color. And this would be section B cross-section, which is Woodgate Lane. That's the one with the open swale and the four-foot sidewalks. Section C, this is Parish Row that's shown in the, uh, green color up at the top. And that's one that we just approved through our preliminary plat for section H. And this shows a balance of Parish Row where you have the, uh, widened-out road with the striping, and that's shown in that brown color, and that's already, already built. Planning Commission reviewed this item at its meeting of July eleventh, and they did unanimously pass a motion recommending approval. Now, at that time, it wasn't really in its final form. So the Planning Commission said, get this thing in its final form by July twenty-eighth, and then we'll get it forward to the Board of Aldermen for approval. They did not meet that seven twenty-eight deadline. And so, and at that time, if you remember, we had this on our agenda for August, or August fifteenth, and you all had, uh, tabled it at that particular time and basically said, well, you know, at that time, they were talking about adding in some additional provisions to maybe reduce the size of some homes there. They'd scrapped that plan, so it's just back to the same exact thing that our Planning Commission saw back in, uh, July. Just cleaned up a little bit, so there's no expansion of the scope of the application. And the item is recommended for approval, not subject to any type of further conditions. And that concludes the staff presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gamble. Any questions of the board regarding the staff report? Is the applicant here tonight? If, if applicant's here, anything else to add? This is also a public comment item. Is anyone here to speak on behalf or in opposition of this item? Thank you. The board have any questions at all, or any motions? Mr. Collins, motion to approve. Second, Ms. Hamilton. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. These are consent items, uh, Planning Commission consent items, uh, before you. Items A, B, and C. These need to be read individually or? Yep, any motions on the consent items unless you need one read individually? And more information, uh, if not, any motions on these items?
Motion to approve the consent.
Mr. Dickerson, motion to approve consent. Second, Mr. Wallace. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Planning Commission, new business is consideration of an application for a preliminary plat for scope subdivision submitted by Chad Fisher, Focal Point Investments, property owner. The request is to subdivide fifteen point eight-nine plus or minus acres into three lots. The subject property is zone M one, Light Industrial District, and is located on the northwest side of Old Craft Road and on the southwest side of Highway one seventy-eight known as eighty-six ninety and eighty-seven hundred Old Craft Road. Staff report.
Yes, sir. Our subject property in this case is just under sixteen acres in size. As you mentioned, we are on the northwest side of Old Craft Road, which runs in this direction, and the southwest side of Highway one seventy-eight that runs here. As you can see from the aerial map, this property has been cleared and partially excavated, and it's currently comprised of two unplatted tax parcels. You can see this tax parcel's one and a half acres in size. And the remaining, I, area that's within the red line is about fourteen and a half acres in size. You may recognize this property. It was rezoned, uh, back in September of two thousand and twenty-one, about two years ago, from C two and AR to the M one Light Industrial Zoning District. And what we have before you tonight is a preliminary plat to subdivide the property into three industrial lots that are shown here. We have lot one that has frontage along Highway one seventy-eight, no frontage along Old Craft Road. That's a little bit over six acres in size. Lot two has the bulk of the frontage along, um, Old Craft Road. It's seven acres in size. And then proposed lot three is, uh, just under one point seven acres in size. And, uh, what the applicant is planning to do is to follow up this preliminary plat application, presuming it would get approved with the final application that would only include the lot one and not include the proposed lots two and three. And this shows you a depiction of the subdivision plat. And what's highlighted in yellow, uh, here is the roadbed of, uh, Old Craft Road. And you can see from this photo, um, picture was taken from about this vantage point right here. The road is about twenty feet in size right now from the edge of pavement to edge of pavement, which would be inadequate to handle the truck traffic that would be generated from an industrial development. And then what's shown in blue is a hundred-foot-wide, uh, TVA easement. And you can see the picture was taken from about that vantage point. You can see these power poles that are located in the background. So that would prohibit or constrict, to a certain extent, the type of development that you would have through that proposed, uh, lot two. That TVA easement runs right between the boundary of, uh, proposed lots two and, and three. Um, as far as the preliminary plat, um, it does address what would happen on Old Craft Road when it was, in fact, developed. And it shows that, um, Old Craft Road with a sixty-eight-foot-wide right-of-way, and this is a drawing that was imposed right on the preliminary plat. And, uh, it does widen out at the very southern end. If you look at the current alignment of Old Craft Road, it kind of splices the property through its, uh, southeastern corner. And so the right-of-way is shown in that gray shaded area, that sixty-eight-foot right-of-way. And there was a little triangular piece that was kind of left over that wasn't really big enough to do anything with. So that's shown as proposed, uh, right-of-way dedication as well. So it actually widens out to about a hundred and fifty feet down at that lower end. And that was based upon some, uh, discussions with our city engineer, what that requirement would be. This is industrial drive that's located just to the south of the subject property. And you can see we have a sixty-eight-foot-wide right-of-way there, forty-eight-foot pavement width. And you can see from the aerial map, we have a truck shown on the, uh, drawing, semi-truck. And those trucks need a wider, um, road to be able to turn and make maneuvers out there. And so that matches what's shown on the plat for proposed Old Craft Road. Our Planning Commission did review this item at its September twelfth meeting, and by unanimous five to zero margin, did pass a motion approving and recommending that the board approve the preliminary plat, uh, to subdivide into three lots, subject to the conditions as noted. One thing that I would note again is that they will be following up with just a final plat. You'll probably see that on your agenda just next month for what will be just lot one. And I wanna note that that has no frontage improvements, um, located along Old Craft Road. So there's not going to be any necessarily requirement, assuming that this is approved tonight and that that would be approved next time for the, for the developer to actually require any type of letter of credit for those improvements along, uh, lot two or three. At the time that they would come back for a final plat and wanna record that final plat, that would be the point where you would be able to get a letter of credit to, uh, cover those improvements to, uh, Old Craft Road. That concludes the staff presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gamble. Any questions? Any discussion or motions?
Motion to approve is presented.
Motion to approve by Mr. Earhart. Second by Mr. Dickerson. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Next item, consideration of application for a final plat for acrey commercial development subdivision phase two, submitted by Harvey Matheny, the Pickering Firm on behalf of David and Sons Properties LLC, property owner. The request is to create three commercial lots and one common open space from four point nine-three plus or minus acres. The subject property is zone C four, planned commercial district, and is located at the southwest corner of Highway three oh two and Craft Road. Report, please.
Mayor, I demand before you is a request to consider the final plat. So there's a final flat, plat for the acrey commercial subdivision phase two. The property lies between Craft Road north to the east, Goodman Road, that is three oh two to the north, and South Hamilton Road to the west. And at the south of the property are essentially single-family residential homes. You had approved already the final plat for phase one of this subdivision, which was recorded already on this particular lot in phase one, that's lot one. The La Quinta Hotel is currently under construction. The approval of phase one included a requirement for the applicant to extend this James Herbert Drive further westward. That has not yet been constructed, but before the applicant bonded, uh, recorded this phase one plat, he had to bond those infrastructure. The plat before you, as I mentioned, is for phase two of the development. This is this area marked in red. It would include the construction of new streets, which has been proposed to be named Bethlehem Drive, and the extension, the further extension of James Herbert Drive from the end of phase one to the end of the area for phase two. The preliminary plat was approved in, on May sixteen, twenty twenty-three, and the application in front of you does not deviate from that preliminary plat. Subdivision construction plans have already been approved by the city engineer addressing things like water, seawall roads, and street lights. However, this infrastructure, this subdivision infrastructure have not yet been constructed. The standard way to do subdivision is for the developer to get preliminary plat approval, get subdivision construction plans approval, build the infrastructure before doing a final plat. But in this particular case, here is proposing to bond all of that infrastructure. What that means, without the construction of those roads in place, if, let's say, there was a development going on, there was some building construction going on on lot two, phase two lot one, and phase two lot two, and there happened to be any incident, EMS would be able to respond to it from Goodman Road, at least it will have some frontage from Goodman Road. But phase two lot three will have absolutely no street frontage. And so the approval conditions of the Planning Commission seek to address those, uh, particular situations. On September twelfth, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval, subject to the number of conditions. Condition number three, being that the developer shall post a letter of credit with the city engineer, uh, with the City of Olive Branch of such amount as shall be determined by the city engineer, plus twenty-five percent contingency for the completion of all public infrastructure before the recordation of the final plat. Secondly, it would be the responsibility of the property owner to obtain all permits for this particular development, including any permits from state agencies when it comes to grading and construction of that road, even when the, the, the two roads have been recorded as public street. I should stress that upon the recordation of this plat, those roads that have not yet been constructed will essentially be public street. He's offering to dedicate them as public street. So there is a condition number... Okay, condition number four addresses that particular issue. It shall be the responsibility of the property owner to maintain the land area, to maintain the land area of any and all street or street sections proposed for dedication to the public in this phase two of the subdivision until such time that all roads or road sections in this phase two are fully completed, inspected by the city engineer or designated, determined by the city engineer to meet public street standards, and the letter of credit for public infrastructure completion release. What that means is, although the plat will show these as dedicated public right-of-way, it will be the responsibility of this applicant to be monitoring. He will have to keep maintaining that land area that has been dedicated to the city until such time that the road is actually built, and the city engineer inspects and finds it to meet public street standard, and as such releases a letter of credit. So that's what, what that means. So this, with this dedication, there will not really be any maintenance responsibility whatsoever on the city until such time that the infrastructure is completed. An occupancy permit shall not be issued for any development on phase two lot one and phase two lot two. Those are the lots that, uh, are joined Goodman Road. Until the first lift of asphalt has been laid on all streets or street sections included in this particular subdivision phase two. And a building permit shall not be issued for any development on phase three lot three. That's a lot further to, to the south that will not have any street frontage upon the recordation of this plat until the first lift of asphalt has been laid on the section of James Herbert Drive in the frontage of this lot. So essentially, the difference between the two conditions is that the lots that are joined Goodman Road, they can, with the recordation of this plat, they can obtain building permits for those lots, but they cannot obtain a certificate of occupancy for any building on those lots until the streets are actually built. But for lot three, they cannot even obtain a building permit until the streets have been built. So that's the difference between those two conditions. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Asa. Any questions regarding the staff report?
Mayor, I have one. A song, assuming that street runs east to west, all the way across this proposed development, at some point, and I understand where we are now, but will that street be conveyed to the city for our upkeep and maintenance?
That runs east and west. Yes, sir.
Okay, so right now, it'll have to meet city standards, obviously, before COs are issued and so forth. But eventually, when it's completed, we'll take access of that street, maintain it, maybe a named street or not.
The, the one going from east to west, let me show this one.
Yes.
That's it.
That is already named James Herbert Drive. The first part of it's shown here in hatch, that's kind of hatch here that goes right up to North Craft Road. That was already dedicated to the city. It is one of the subdivision. So this phase two will essentially dedicate the street from here right up to this location. But the applicant will be maintaining it until it's actually constructed, completed. The construction plans have been submitted to the city engineer. He has reviewed them and approved them. That it will meet city standard.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Any additional questions?
That would be the same thing for this Bethlehem Drive as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Any discussion or motions?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Ms. Hamilton. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Wallace. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item four, cons... Item four, consideration of application to amend the preliminary plat for the villages at South Branch subdivision Phase One submitted by Henry Porter, H.W. Porter Consultants, P L L C, on behalf of Miguel Terhune, South Branch Development LLC, property owner. The request is to add a common open space and surrounding road sections from initially planned Phase Five to Phase One. The subject property is Zoned R3 Planned Residential District and is located on the east side of Pleasant Hill Road North between Stonecrest Drive and Brayham Drive. Report, please.
Mayor, I demand a request before you is to consider a revision to the Phase One of the preliminary plat for the villages at South Branch. This is basically what the plat for Phase One of this subdivision, as you approved it on April nineteen, twenty twenty-two, looked like. The total land area as approved on that day was forty-nine-point-four-six acres. The request before you is essentially to add additional land to this particular land area for a number of reasons, really one main reason. This is the amenity plan for the PD. In Area One or Phase One of the subdivision, and as it was approved in the project text and the preliminary development plan, you had this swimming pool at this particular location as an amenity to service the residents that would be buying those lots in Phase One. So the applicant was required to construct these recreational amenities in Phase One of this subdivision. However, in the course of construction, of constructing these roads, it became necessary by design to enlarge the detention pond in this area in order to handle the amount of stormwater, which by calculation would be going into this particular area of the property. Once that detention pond was enlarged, it took away the land area that would have ordinarily been allocated for the construction of this pool. In order to still provide that amenity for the residents of Phase One of this subdivision, the applicant is proposing to move the pool to this pocket park, which will be outside of the area that you approved for the preliminary plat of Lot One marked here, demarcated here in yellow. By moving the plat to that particular location, the pocket park and the streets surrounding it now need to become part of Phase One of this particular project. So the applicant is essentially requesting preliminary plat amendment in order to include that area in red into Phase One of this particular development. The second reason for moving that pool is that, as you see on this particular project text, master plan layout, this street, which is proposed to be named Sipsy Way, will be the main collector's street linking this subdivision from Davidson Road to the east and Pleasant Hill Road to the west. And as such, at full build out, it will be a busy road because it is the only road linking this, everybody in this subdivision either going to Davidson or to Pleasant Hill would be on that road at some point. And so this area would most likely, the area where it had a swimming pool, would most likely be a busy street area. For that reason, the developer thinks it would be more appropriate to move the swimming pool to a location that would be away from that busy street. That is the reason for these changes. This is what that new location, Common Open Space Five oh Four, is proposed to look like. So you have the swimming pool. Instead of just having an open pocket park there, we'll actually have the swimming pool. They're also proposing to construct an event lawn, pickleball court, and multipurpose open field with trails linking the entire open space. Those trails will not replace the sidewalks. You will still have the sidewalks for the streets at the edges of the common open space. The preliminary plat, therefore, will move from this, basically change from looking like this to looking like this. The planning commission reviewed this application at its meeting on September twelfth and recommended approval, subject to two conditions, namely that all responsibilities will remain those of the developer, and secondly, all conditions of approval of the preliminary plat, as ordered by the Board of Admin on April nineteen, remain in force. That concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Any questions regarding the staff report? Is the applicant here to add anything that hasn't been covered? Good evening. Thank you. Any questions of the board, from the board, rather? No c store and gas pumps? I just wanted to make sure.
Are you sure?
All right, any questions?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Motion by Mr. Dickerson to approve as presented. Is there a second? I'm Mr. Earhart.
Good move, then.
Sorry. Second by Ms. Aldridge. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
This gas fee was getting through you already.
It is. Oh, man. Next item. Thank you. Item five is the final plat, consideration of application for the final, for a final plat for the villages at South Branch subdivision Phase One A submitted by Henry Porter, W.H. Porter Consultants, P L L C, on behalf of Miguel Terhune, South Branch Development LLC, property owner. The request is to create forty-seven residential lots and five common open space from thirty-three-point-seventy-four plus or minus acres. The subject property is Zoned R3 Planned Residential District and is located on the east side of Pleasant Hill Road North between Stonecrest Drive and Brayham Drive.
Mayor, I demand this is a request to approve the final plat for Phase One A of the villages at South Branch Plan Development subdivision. You just approved the preliminary plat amendment on this particular Phase One, so basically all these lots in the preliminary plat stage. The application before you is to approve, is a request to approve, the final plat for Phase One A. What that means is the developer is deciding, has decided, so to speak, to divide Phase One into two. So Phase One, preliminary plat included, everything you have in front of you, but Phase One A is only the area shown here in yellow. And as he explained at the planning commission, when they had this approved at preliminary plat stage with ninety-six lots, they intended to go into all the infrastructure of your ninety-six lots, but with the changes in the economy, as we are seeing inflation and so on, are they kind of deciding to go take this again in steps. And for that reason, they have only completed the subdivision infrastructure, the swimming amenities, and that common open space E five oh four area for these forty-seven lots. The forty-seven lots will consist of fourteen, based on the project, this is the master plan of that unit. It will consist of fourteen estate lots, minimum twenty thousand square feet, eight mini estate lots, minimum fifteen thousand square feet. The estate lots are in this area. This particular development, final plat proposes the elimination of these three potential or planned lots, what was approved in the master plan, because this area is now occupied by a large stormwater extension pond. We will come up with a house in that particular area. There will be four grand manor lots in this area. Minimum twelve thousand square feet, eleven manor lots, minimum ten thousand square feet, and ten cottage lots, so a total of forty-seven lots. Subdivisional infrastructure has been built, this is the large detention pond I was talking about. Subdivisional infrastructure is in place already. There's a seawall line, there was in there, drainage is in place, there is some gross fire hydrants and water lines, street lights.
Ah, fine.
Electric lines extended already to each of the lots. So subdivisional infrastructure has been constructed, sidewalks in front of open, common open space areas have been constructed, but we don't yet have sidewalks in front of the lots. So the applicant proposes to bond those infrastructures. If he had constructed them, then they will basically be torn apart when they're building the driveways. So he will be bonding those sidewalks. A number of new streets have been proposed in this subdivision, the street sections, which will total one-on-one, three, four miles, and are proposed to be dedicated to the city. A couple of new streets are proposed, Sipsy Way is the main road now linking this subdivision from going from Pleasant Hill to Davidson. So all these streets marked here in yellow, those are all new streets that are proposed to be dedicated to the city, we have length and square miles to the area. Improvement has also been made along Pleasant Hill Road. So this has been widened, they've recovered sidewalk. Warning surface, ADA warning surface is required to be at this particular location. That needs to be put in place as soon as possible in order to meet ADA requirements. The project text also called for a number of improvements that have not been constructed. One of it, with the condition of this final plat, you have the subdivision sign that needs to be installed in this common open space. You have in front or along Pleasant Hill Road, there is supposed to be a row of trees, plus a convert fence, civil access, those are all fine. Those are not yet reviewed. Those, that's private infrastructure. A trail was also required to be constructed at this particular location. The applicant is proposing, he proposed at the planning commission, not to construct this trail because there is no swimming pool at this location anywhere. That is because he will basically be replacing the trail at that location with the ones he will be constructing in this common open space E five oh four, where he will be moving the swimming pool to and constructing these other amenities. Planning commission at its meeting on September twelfth recommended approval, subject to a number of conditions. One of them being that the preliminary plat be approved, the revised preliminary plat be approved, which it does be, and the developer will have to submit a letter of credit to the city for the completion of all, you know, completed public infrastructure. Importantly, the planning commission, in its recommendation, provided that the developer must construct the wood over any fence, eighteen feet from the right of way of Pleasant Hill Road, the subdivision will be assigned along Pleasant Hill Road, the swimming pool, and extend Brayham Drive to common open space five oh four, and all the streets surrounding that common open space before the thirty-first house in the subdivision may pass final inspection. It's common in the city. Usually we have a number of houses, it will be registered as three quarters, a number of houses, before those private infrastructure will be constructed as common practice historically. The applicant, after the planning commission meeting, they will start and propose an amendment to this number five. And I will let him, the applicant himself, explain the reason for this. The amendment would essentially be that those private infrastructure, instead of being completed before the thirty-first house, they would be completed before the forty-seventh house. This Phase One has a total of forty-seven lots, so in actuality, all the lots, and the construction of all the lots, before the forty-seventh house, before the forty-seventh house may pass final inspection. Nor can the final plat for Phase One be, those are the rest of the lot, rather than ninety-six, be recorded until such time said improvements are completed. Furthermore, the developer must obtain a full permit within six months of the condition of the final plat, that Phase One A, this particular plat, must obtain a full permit. And draft covenants may be submitted for staff review to ensure that all the provisions and covenant align with the provisions of the project text and any conditions that were imposed in this final plat. That concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, sir. Any questions on the staff report?
Just one for our guest, our developer. Why the forty-seventh house rather than the thirty-first? I think I know, but I want to hear from you.
Hey, Andrew Porter, W.A. Porter, that says the, so they make a reason why we're doing this and that. So we'll move the pool over, so we try to get that away from the main, where it's going to be. The reason why we're pushing this back is we've kind of gone a little bit out of order how we're having this pool and how the common space. It usually will report the plat and the builder will take over this area and then we'll start spending money on, we're making it easier, making it nice again. So we're going to kind of push, pushing that down. And we kind of worry about the time we'll take to build all that and get it up and pay it right. But we want to make sure that y'all know that we're going to go on to do that, but really kind of pulling the building permit for the pool permit within six months. They had said that we could not afford the, until all this done. But it's all basic time, you know, right now it's going to take a while, you know, a contract currently, even start, all the construction.
How many pools are in the neighborhood?
How many pools? Right now, one's probably.
Just, just, just the one?
Yes.
That was an original plaque, though.
It was, it was a lot smaller, but, you know, it was really just the whole house up cool, just kind of, yeah, based on.
On the side, it was major.
Yeah.
So it's a matter of timing permits, infrastructure, and ultimately, ultimately selling more lots so you can pay for it, which is fine.
I mean, a little, it's more, frankly, it's more time.
Okay.
Time is the main issue. Now, it's not really necessarily tied to, you know, selling house to make money on it. It's, you know, money's already kind of been set aside for the benefit of the year. Because it's going to kind of grow beyond just this one five, this individual, within this building.
Okay.
But since it's part of the first payment, it's all there.
All right, thank you.
Any additional questions?
I'm sorry. I may have just missed this when Asom was giving the report. Will the three lots that are being eliminated go into just the common open space in that area?
They, they will, because that inch base.
Say, say that again?
When we expanded the inch base and we grew the lots.
I got you.
And we're not picking those up anymore else.
Mayor, if there are no further questions, I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Do we, I'm sorry, do we need to clarify, Asom, which condition five?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve with the developer's request of the forty-seventh lot.
So, condition five included in the motion made by Almanir Hart, is there a second?
Second.
Second, ultimate large Collins, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Porter. Item six, hearing date for consideration and action on motion declaring the condition of the following properties to be amendments to public safety, public health and safety, and directing either the city staff or contract labor to clean the property forthwith. So only one at this point?
Yes, sir. As shown on your screen, the Smith property, ninety-two thirty-six Railroad Avenue, still is not in compliance.
Is anyone here associated with this property? Ms. Betsy Millward Smith? Or anyone associated with the property? Very good.
Hey, Mayor, is there a possibility to meet the law, maybe out there?
I don't know. I guess it's a possibility she could, could have been out there. Do you know this? Have you had any interaction with the lady? I'm sure code enforcement has, but you don't know Ms. Smith, do you?
No, sir.
Yeah, I don't know.
She's probably not out there, then. She's probably not, she's probably not there.
She wouldn't have seen that one. I don't want to be my living.
Yeah, this, Mr. Collins is asking, we don't know if anybody lives there, but basically this would attach to the property itself and whoever is associated with that property, then it had to attach to it. Yes, sir.
They'll still have time, they will make the motion.
Why? Say, say that again, Mr. Wallace?
They'll still have time to address it once he tells them.
And board, I believe the condition that is that issue is just grass. And so the total cost would be relatively low. And if the board feels like the public interest of having the property cleaned up outweighs some potential difficulty in collecting, if there's an ownership issue. The board could declare it a menace and clean it up if it felt like that was in the public's best interest.
I'll make that motion.
That motion is to clean it up in the interest of the public since the person may be deceased. Oh, declare it as a menace and go forward. Motion by Mr. Wallace, second by Ms. Henderson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We'll go forward and try to figure out who's, who's that it is. Can we take, you have to take these individual?
Yes, you're taking them, but you don't have to read the memo as you said, you know, the recommendation is to approve further memo.
Okay, you've got, you've got the memo and the supplies in front of you. This was tabled before in order to get additional bid information in. Any questions or motions on item one, consideration of bids? Opened August twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three for natural gas supplies. Yes, sir. Mr. Collins, motion second. Ms. Hamilton, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Item two, consideration of bids open the same date for street supplies. Low bid on that one, all of them, I do believe. Motion by Mr. Wallace. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Aldridge. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Third, consideration of bids open August the twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three for water and wastewater supplies. Mr. Dixon, motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Collins. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to leave regular session within intentions of going into executive session? Ms. Henderson, Ms. Ha- Ms. Henderson's motion, second. Ms. Hamilton, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel matter in the airport department? Personnel matter in the concession department and personnel matters in the park department. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So move.
Mr. Earhart, motion. Second, Ms. Aldridge. All in favor? All opposed? We are in executive session.